Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Regular Meeting on Wednesday, May 28th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m., City Hall Council Chambers. As always, we will start out with an invocation and a pledge. At this time, I'm going to ask Father Mike Brady with Christ Episcopal Church to come forward and give us our invocation, and then we'll have the pledge. And I think there's some exciting things going on at Christ Episcopal Church over the last few days, so congratulations on that.
Let's take a moment and put ourselves in the presence of God. Lord of all the nations, grant your wisdom to our mayor and city council. Give them the courage to apply that wisdom with integrity, clarity of purpose, and compassion. Don't let the extremes of party politics or posturing blind those who govern or motivate those who oppose, so that we may all honor one another and seek only common good. Lord, we pray for our city of Bradenton. Strength in what is good within her and teach us to cherish it. Strengthen the insight of our leaders into what is best for the people and give them the courage to argue for a future that will bring about the flourishing of our community. I lift up all law enforcement officers, first responders, and those who help those in need. Fathers, shield them with your loving presence, guard them in their work, and grant them hearts of compassion to ensure the safety and well-being of those that they encounter. Help us all to renew our commitments to one another, so that in our everyday lives, we may bear one another's burdens and rejoice to share one another's joys. We pray this in the name of your blessed son, our Savior Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Kramer to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, good morning. At this time, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Item 3A is a proclamation for Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, which I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers are often not credited for the jobs that they do in saving lives and improving neighborhoods. Every day, assisted by support and program staff, they provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times their efforts go unnoticed, even after code compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their jobs seriously and are proud of their department and the local government within which they serve. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of June 2nd through the 6th, 2025, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, and urge all citizens to express appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by the code enforcement officers. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. And who do we have receiving this? Mr. Volker and crew? Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our code enforcement officers and our code enforcement coordinators. We have a few new faces, so I just would like to introduce them. First, we have Candy, who's our kind of new code enforcement coordinator who works behind the scenes. She started in December, no, November. We have Mike McGinnis, of course, our senior code enforcement officer. We have Frank, who started in December. We have Rodney, our newest code enforcement officer who started two weeks ago. And we have, of course, Doug, who started three years ago. So you know him. We still have one open position that we're interviewing code enforcement people for, so we hope we can fill that position. Probably we make a decision this week, so we have a few more interviews. I want to thank you, and I want to thank the rest of your council and everybody for their support, Mr. Perry. And I want to say one more thing, because it's a special day today. I want to thank Chief Bevan for her support for all these years that she was with us in code enforcement. I want to wish you best in your retirement, and I'm looking forward to working with Councilman Kramer when he gets appointed to be the new police chief. I remember him when he was a sergeant.
So do I.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. Why don't you come up here and we'll get a picture?
Mayor, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I just want to point out that it's been a kind of a hallmark year for code enforcement. They've done a lot of really good things, and they have throughout my four-year tenure. But this year, they really kind of tightened down, and we had a bunch of cases that had to go to court, and it was kind of novel as far as going to the circuit court to get enforcement action, because that was the only options that were left. And you probably remember some of this property. You and I were out there with Volker, his team, Mike, and folks. They've done a great job with their policy development, with the training on it. Mike has a new extended pole to reach signs that are higher than, yeah, doesn't have to get up on a ladder. And so their equipment, as well as their operations, they just really have done a good job this year. And obviously with our addition of Frank, Rodney, and Candy, you know, we're filling the gaps and just trying to make sure we get full coverage for the city enforcement. It's a delicate balance that they do, and they do it well and professionally.
And when people get to see you, they're not always happy to see you. But obviously, we just have rules and policies. So, all right, well, thank you very much. And we'll get a picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Our next proclamation is for National Garden Week, June 1st through the 7th, 2025. Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts. And whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. Whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work. And whereas gardeners advocate for the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning, as well as those having years of experience. And whereas gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of our life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardening enables members of garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a world of difference in the communities where they reside and work. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 1st through the 7th, 2025, as National Garden Week in Bradenton, and acknowledge the importance of gardening and the numerous contributions of gardeners. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Who do we have here? Anybody? Just saw you. Come on forward. Good morning and welcome.
On behalf of the Manatee River Garden Club, we thank you all for your support. We are approaching our centennial, and we will be working with Councilwoman Barnaby to make some plans. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilwoman Barnaby?
I was going to say, some of you may or may not remember when you had the statewide meeting. You had Mother Nature show up. That was fun. So I'm looking forward to continuing to partner with the Manatee River Garden Club. They do such an awesome, awesome job. And I know at least of three or four people that I grew up with that were involved in your junior gardening club. Some of them became floral designers, some of them became landscape architects. So you never know what's going to come from that little pebble that you throw out into our community.
Thank you.
We're very proud. This year, we also gave out four scholarships to young people going to university for ecology, landscaping, and returning to our community. So we're very proud of that.
Congratulations. Thank you. If you want to come up forward, we'll get a picture. Have a great day and look forward to the centennial.
Item 4A is the quarterly employee recognition.
Who do we have coming forward?
Ms. Standifer and Nilsa Taylor are going to start us off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Perry, Mr. Rudessell, Chief Bevan, Chief Gier, Nilsa Taylor, Director of Administrative Services. Today gives me great pleasure to recognize several employees for exemplary leadership, teamwork, and commitment, outstanding support to another department, and creativity in new and innovative work processes. Employees were nominated by their peers, supervisors, or directors, and were evaluated and reviewed by city administration, chief operating officer, administrative services, and human resources. Based on these accomplishments, we are pleased to announce team of the quarter, employee of the quarter, and two runner-ups. With that, Mr. Perry? No? Ms. Standifer?
Okay, thank you. Good morning to all. At this time, if Ms. Tiffany Shattuck will come up. Ms. Tiffany Shattuck is a runner-up. She works 24 hours a day, seven days a week, helping to ensure our citizens get the most up-to-date information as quickly as possible. She is tasked with the duty of putting our citizens' well-being first and simultaneously keeping our elected and administrative staff informed of potential issues happening throughout our city. She consistently goes the extra mile to get the information to produce high-quality product and educates herself on most any topic, even though it is not in her area of expertise. During the hurricane crisis, Tiffany worked tirelessly to help calm our citizens during a very stressful crisis. She was setting up interviews, posting social media, writing press releases, updating the webpage, fighting, and I'm sorry, and fielding calls from outside agencies as well as our own staff. Although Tiffany was operating on little to no sleep, she maintained her professional composure and was an excellent representative for our city. It was her hard work that kept our citizens informed of the very serious situation that was happening. She has a strong work ethic and will take on outside projects even when her workload is at capacity. She is creative and looks for innovative ways to promote our city. She is never satisfied with just getting it done. She consistently strives to help us be the friendly city. Thank you so much for your dedication and creative thinking that keeps us moving forward. She has proven her commitment to our city in sunny days and in our time of need. Thank you so much.
Speech.
I would not expect you to come up first. So I'm over here shaking like a leaf, but thank you. All in a day's work. I love my job, and it's just part of the job. I do it for the city. I do it for the people.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. We'll get a big group picture at the end.
Okay. Right. Okay. And our next runner-up is Mariville Hernandez. She is out at a conference, so Ms. Corey Fortin is going to come up in her stead and accept. If you'll come up. Mariville was initially hired as a temp through an employment agency to help with the implementation of the vacation rental registration program. This was a new program for the city, and the registration review process is laborious. As the program was new to the city, the process of learning the third-party vendor system, the proper documentation required, and the process of conveying this to the registrants who were oftentimes confused and combative was an enormous undertaking. Mariville grabbed the bull by the horns, became an expert on the requirements and the system, and with an extremely helpful and positive attitude assisted several hundred applicants to successfully complete the registration process. We received several emails and telephone calls from applicants who wanted to reach out and express how courteous and professional Mariville was in assisting them through this process. Mariville was absolutely instrumental in making this program a success. We are very fortunate to have her on Team Bradenton. So, thank you very much.
So I'm not Mariville, obviously, and I will not stand for the picture. But you all need to know that she is truly a rock star. Everything that was put in the nomination is true, and we couldn't have done it without her, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll be announcing team of the quarter. Officer Jeff Fox, Officer Connor Horsley, Officer Enzo Rivera, Detective Carl Jones, Officer Kevin Williams, and Reserve Officer Brian Wingate. If you would please step forward. Excellent, thank you. Recently, the police department has underwent a transition to a new duty weapon system with advanced technology. This team of officers collaborated, researched, and developed both on- and off-duty and LEAT Training Lesson Plan, PowerPoint lecture, demonstration, and real-world practical exercises while qualifying the entire agency in proficiency. These officers adjusted their schedules, family time, some on a very short notice, to accomplish the mission. In all, over 100 officers were provided training on this new system with no accident, and every member showing proficiency. The discipline and professional demeanor that these officers project while training, while teaching their students, and working in their normal tasks, along with extreme safety measures, commands respect by their fellow officers without request. This team of officers are constantly collaborating and listening to the students in conjunction with various standards to enhance the training environment. These dedicated officers, true to their passion and trade, reach into their own pockets to purchase advanced training equipment for the betterment of everyone. It gives me great pleasure to recognize an outstanding team of officers as employees of the quarter.
Everybody?
I want to first thank the officers that couldn't be here. They were a huge part of this program as well. A huge thank you to Kevin Williams for kind of running the logistics and allowing myself, Carl, Wingate, and the others to kind of have fun out on the range, as we're not paperwork or computer guys at all. So, thank you, Kevin, for that. A lot of professionalism, a lot of pride out there. The guys and the team did exceptionally well, and we're very thankful for this recognition and this honor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Kramer.
Thank you. I have some training, I believe, this afternoon with Officer Williams, so I'll hear all about this. I have not been trained on that duty weapon yet, but hopefully pretty soon. Okay. And Officer Wingate, was it a surprise for this happening when you walked in and worked as a reserves officer here? Okay, all right. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Photo.
Oh, we'll get it all, everybody together. Yeah, we'll get it. Don't leave yet, please.
Thank you. And lastly, we are announcing employee of the quarter, Nick Orlowsky. Nick is a senior member of the information technology team and plays a pivotal role in the success of both the department and the city. His dedication, expertise, and willingness to assist others make him an invaluable asset. Nick started as an intern and has held multiple positions within the department, demonstrating a strong commitment to growth and service. He is always ready to help with a positive attitude, mentoring staff, answering questions, and sharing his extensive knowledge to strengthen the team. As Hurricane Milton approached, Nick took the lead in preparing the city's systems and infrastructure. He ensured that local computers were set up to keep the water reclamation facility's systems operational during the storm. Additionally, he migrated critical police department applications to the city's backup data center to maintain uninterrupted service. His tireless efforts were instrumental in restoring city facilities and systems after the storm. To strengthen the resilience of Water Reclamation Facility's network, the IT team initiated a project to enhance access to critical applications for both daily operations and emergency situations. Nick implemented an onsite network at Water Reclamation Facility, allowing staff to maintain access to their applications even in the event of a storm or other disruption. Nick played a crucial role in the successful relocation of Public Works and Utilities Network infrastructure to Tropicana. From testing cables and configuring switches to relocating servers, he ensured the network was fully operational even before the physical move was completed, enabling Public Works and Utilities staff to resume work seamlessly. His dedication and problem-solving skills make a significant impact on city operations. Thank you.
Didn't know I was talking today. Well, thank you, everyone. I was just telling my team a little bit ago, my wife and I actually just jumped out of a plane Sunday and went skydiving, and this is like 10 times scarier than that right now. As you can imagine, that's why I'm IT, and I like to try to hide behind the scenes. Yeah, been here nine years, and I still live coming to work. Got a lot of good projects coming up with the new police station, new fire too. And yeah, just keeps me interested and keeps me coming back, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Barnaby.
This man is one of the most patient people on earth and has earned the nickname Saint Nick.
Congratulations. Thank you. Good to get everybody to come back up. Get a picture.
10 o'clock.
Thank you. Having to walk, but it's hot in here. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Item 5 is citizen comment.
Citizen comment, thank you. At this time, we will accept citizen comment, and this is accepted during our citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on public hearings at the appropriate time. And as we always say, you come up, you have three minutes, state your name and your city of residence, and you have your three minutes. But we do ask and remind everybody in the audience that we don't accept yelling from the audience. The quorum is important, this is a business meeting, and any type of outburst, you'll be asked to leave the room. So, thank you very much. First one I have is Linda Sebold. Good morning.
Good morning. Linda Sebold, city of Bradenton, and I'm here to speak on the lift station project and the collection system and the temporary lift station in Sanders property. But I feel like it's an exciting project for everyone, for the city. And of course, I still believe that we should be working on Lift Station 3 and the collection system now, and keep this other project as a temporary, the second temporary lift station as a backup project, in case something really bad happens. That's just what I believe. Now, as an outside observer to this, what's going on right now, I don't believe we have hired a project manager yet, and I think we're still wanting to do that. Seems to me that all the major decisions are being made before he even gets, he or she even gets a chance to look at it. And are we planning on putting all the utilities and the road once this opened up? The electric, the cable, water upgrade, water pipe upgrades, whatever needs to happen? And I think we need to treat this as a very simple project as possible, and I think we will have better results. Don't let anyone tell you that it's not simple, because we do this all over the country and the county and here locally every day, or, you know, every month anyhow. And Manatee County and the city of Bradenton Beach fairly recently upgraded the whole sewer system out there. They included putting all utilities underground. Woodruff &amp; Sons were consulted with this project. Again, I'm very excited about this project, and I hope we will make it successful.
Thank you. Next, we have Glenn Gibbelina. Please come forward and state your name and city of residence, and you have three minutes. Yeah, she's getting it. There it is.
For the record, Glenn Gibbelina, Manatee County. I was here five weeks ago and addressed my concerns on the surplus property. I didn't get a response that day, so I said, well, let me just email you and give you some white papers and some other information, and I'll do that. It's been five weeks. I'm asking for eight emails. I don't know what the big deal is. Anyways, I did contact Mayor Brown, and I did get a response from a records request this morning. Oh, we're channeling it to the right folks. It's unacceptable. I do stuff with the county all the time, 10 times this volume, and it's done in a couple of days. volume, and it's done in a couple of days. The other thing I want to talk about is... Good to see you at Memorial Day, and I am big on civil liberties, so when they're violated, I get concerned. So, this is case law from the First Amendment, and I am a member of it. You cannot ask me for my ID at a school board meeting. It's against the law. There's case law on it. I can walk in any building, right? The judicial center, the clerk, the county, nobody asks for ID. But you ask for an ID because of that metal detector, the 20 feet of chambers, you think pedophiles and open warrants are, are gonna be, are gonna save the kids from jumping out of that elevator. It's ridiculous. Anyways, you can't do that. Please correct it by, by the next time because I am going to the, and I talked to your officers, and I said, look, you can't do that. They ignored me completely. I hope you correct it, Chief. In the meantime, I, I have... I have filed a complaint with the Attorney General. I have copied everybody in that, the school board. I filed a complaint against the school board as well. I take my freedom very seriously. This is a no-ID state unless I have committed a crime or articulate exposition of a crime. You can't ask me for my ID. You can't do it. You gave, the school board gave your officers an unlawful order to say, you're not going in there without an ID. So, well, please, let's not escalate this further. And hopefully by July 8th, this will be taken care of. But they will be contacting you, and your attorney will tell you, you're gonna lose this case. Case law from the Attorney General since 2005? This was never in place when Mitch, Mitch Palm, Title Bomb was there. I don't know how it got back in place. It's against the law. You can't do it. Save the taxpayers some money because if these guys get involved, an Attorney General, it's gonna cost you a ton, and you're gonna lose anyway. So please, do the right thing. Protect my civil rights.
Thank you. Have no other comments. I'll, I'll make a couple if we go to counsel and chief maybe. On the lift station, I know everything is being processed through. Things are talked about every day, Mr. Perry and I, and Mr. Williams and others. So that is a, an exciting project as we, we know. And, and obviously, everything that's being done is setting it up to succeed and do it as quick as possible, so that's the most important. And then going to, we don't control the school board rules and regulations. We just do what we're told. And if they have a problem, that they think it's, it's on the school board, not the City of Bradenton. But obviously, our officers would never try to do anything other than what they're being directed by because they're hired by them.
Correct.
Yes. And it is, it's, it's, they're being paid by them.
Correct.
Correct. So, that will be a school board issue to deal with. And again, I don't know what their rules are or what they do, but we don't do it here at City Hall. So, any other comments or... Alright, moving forward. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Item six is the consent agenda, and staff is requesting approval of items A through F.
Alright, Chair will entertain a motion. And Mr. Perry.
Mayor, I got the opportunity to meet and confer with entirety of council on items A through F and answer questions as best as I could and provide additional information when asked. And with that, I think that's presented before council for approval.
Alright. Chair will entertain a motion. Anybody?
Make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Alright, and second by Mrs. Moore. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Perry, I am going to, at this time, jump down on the agenda to new business by department heads and bring up the proposed scope and fee with Dover Coal and Partners for an Economic Development Action Plan. I'm going to jump that ahead to right now, so we're ready to move forward. Because we do have a time sensitive that I want to make sure at 10 o'clock, but, okay. Alright.
And Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment while they're getting ready. Obviously, Ms. Hilstrom at EDC is here and does our economic development work, and Victor Dover and his team are here as well. And I did have the opportunity to speak with all council yesterday along with Ms. Hilstrom, and we had great conversations. I think there was some discussions about what's different from this project as it relates to what we will be trying to accomplish. And, and I think it's really important because there was, that was a common question as far as what's different from this project, what'll make it not sit on a shelf, what'll make it actionable and the like. And the presentation will involve those types of answers. But one thing that was a common theme is that this is an effort to really look at our, our opportunity to renew and, and reinvigorate and reinvest in, in what we have here in Bradenton as far as our ability to attract business, good quality of life, mobility, deal with traffic, and a whole host of other things that, that Mr. Dover and Ms. Hilstrom will be talking about. So it's considerably different, and I think it's different to the extent of, it, when we look at the totality of all the work that's been done dating back, you know, many years, whether it's Bradenton by design and, and some of those projects and some of the great works that's been done over the last 10, 15, 20 years. It's, it's a different Bradenton, and it'll be a different Bradenton 20 years from now. And we want to focus on, on how to renew it and how to, how to stay current and how to offer our citizens, our visitors, our employers, opportunities to really thrive here in the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hilstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Good morning. Really excited to be here to present our recommendation for consultants to create the urban renewal action plan for the City of Bradenton. So, we started this journey back in November of 2023, and there was quite a bit for us to understand. Initially, we want to get going right away, get a consultant, get a plan going. But then, what we realized was you had the visioning plan going on, and then through more research, understood that there were probably about four other plans that were in the library of the City of Bradenton. So, we took a step back, basically took a pause, and reviewed all of those plans because we didn't want to duplicate what had been done previously, but still relevant and could be included as a component of this new plan going forward. And we didn't want to spend money on things that had already been done that will probably be incorporated into this plan as well. So being very cognizant of both of those things. So we went ahead and reviewed all of those, and then we came up with what our criteria would be to choose the next consultant for this renewal plan for the City of Bradenton. So what we decided was, we wanted a consultant that had demonstrated experience in citywide development planning and execution, so a proven entity. We wanted a consultant that had relationships with commercial developers all over the country, which will be very important as we move forward here. We wanted a consultant that was skilled in computer modeling and multimedia presentation. And then additionally, we wanted a consultant that could create a plan within the budget of $200,000 to $250,000. So, how did the interview process go? We ultimately interviewed four candidates, and with that interview, we outlined the city's immediate and future needs. We reviewed four proposals. We identified two finalists, and then we solicited revised proposals and ultimately made a decision. The four firms that we did work with were Redevelopment Management Associates, Dover Coal &amp; Partners. We also con, consulted with the former mayor of St. Petersburg, Rick Baker, and then the Florida Center for City Design at USF. Ultimately, we decided, let me back up. All of those candidates were excellent and well-qualified, but we ultimately decided to go with Dover Coal &amp; Partners. And now, it's my pleasure to invite them up to tell you a little bit about them. Gentlemen?
Good morning, Mayor. Council members, thank you for the privilege of being here this morning. In our office, we, we probably have the best job in the world because we get to travel around the country and help communities figure out what they want to be when they grow up and keep one eye on the ground right in front of them, the immediate future, and one eye across the horizon so that they're sure that whatever actions they take now are building toward the place they really want to be and, and not foreclosing their possibilities as they do things that are actionable immediately. So in our office, we've been doing this since 1987. We do a lot of different things at different scales. We work about half the time for local governments and community groups, foundations, regional agencies, and the like. And about half the time for private investors and developers, often families and landowners doing long-term estate planning, that sort of thing. We don't work for those private and public clients in the same place at the same time. So we have no private clients in this area, and our job is to help you translate the public interest to would-be investors, to motivate them to re-energize what you're doing. There are three key pillars to doing that. We have to be confident that we're moving forward on a plan that there's general agreement about. That means not everything has to be figured out in ahead of time, but enough has to be known and agreed on that investors can confidently put money down minimizing their risk. The second is, we need to visualize what that will be. It's a visual business. We make a lot of pictures, and I'll just warn you ahead of time. We'll show you pictures and we'll say, like this? No? How about like that? And, and help you choose from alternatives. And then third, the focus has to be on the doable, which means in our time, not just in the fullness of, of the future. So we have a partner that works with us on these kinds of projects, urban economists from a firm called PES, Partners for Economic Solutions. We've managed to do this kind of work for, with them all over the country. Our urban economists work the business side while we're working the design and planning side. This is just a little list of some of the kinds of communities that have had us come work, and we're, of course, we're grateful for the chance to work for private investors as well. Translators is often how we find ourselves serving because investors and developers speak a different language. They think about things differently than community groups and local government, and so we often have, find ourselves in the position of bridging those two groups. I've noticed a little, last little bit of chest beating here. I'm, I'm super proud of this. We've, over the last couple of decades, we've contributed heavily to the basic bookshelf on planning and it really, all the major textbooks on planning over the last couple of decades have featured our projects on the cover, or we wrote a chapter or what have you. And I wrote this big fat book on street design. Fair, fair warning. I'll just tell you now, I think street design is the one thing we can least afford to get wrong and the one thing most often gotten wrong. So we'll constantly talk about the public realm between buildings, not just the private realm inside buildings. So that kind of work has led us, as I said, all over the country and sometimes abroad. But our favorite thing to do is work here in our home state. My office is located in Coral Gables, and Andrew, Senior Project Director for our firm, here he is. Andrew Giorgiades is located in Sarasota. So we're, we're not far away and we're eager to, to jump in on this. Andrew will talk a little bit more about some examples and cover some of our history with Bradenton.
Thank you. Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And as Victor had mentioned, we, we have just...
Andrew?
Oh, yes.
Even last night, you were kind of quiet. You might have to articulate a little bit more.
I see.
I know, I know.
My name is Andrew Giorgiades. Is that better? And as Victor had, had hinted at, we have a few images here showing some small and, and medium-sized cities in Florida that are, that have some similar characteristics. And of course, we, I moved to Sarasota ultimately because of the work on, on the Form-Based Code many years ago in 2010. And I, I was coming to Bradenton very often, and then eventually Sarasota asked me to, to join their, their planning department in order to, to do some code work there. And so these are those, the images from that effort. And then also on the East Coast, there are some smaller revitalization projects such as the Jupiter Waterfront, which, these are some of the, the Shred images. And also this, which is a rendering from Winter Park, Florida, showing the gateway to Rollins College, which ultimately was built like this. And then also the street design for Park Avenue, which is the main thoroughfare of, of Winter Park. And so this is the result of the code and the street design work done there. Most recently, we have a, a project in Venice, so just to the south of here, and this one is actually not the Venice Island portion, but the industrial portion that's to the east of Tamiami Trail. And Victor, I think you...
You know, Venice benefits from a plan from the patron saint of urban designers and, and city planners, John Nolan, who was the first American to call himself a professional city planner. But he designed Venice and then also laid out a street grid for what's called the seaboard area adjacent to the intercoastal these days. There was no intercoastal when he drew the maps originally. So, that area built up along the rail line as an industrial area, but now it is evolving to become a mixed-use area. And I'll just show you a couple of before and after pictures of what's going on there. The city invested in some property, and the plan is to really remake the relationship to the waterfront in that area so that the east side of Venice can hold up to the standard of the west side of Venice. We have a lot of projects on the Gulf Coast, so I'll just show you some of the ones that we're active on at the moment. Under construction in Estero is the, what we call the Lee Health Village. Lee Health Authority owned that land. And one of their board members said to us, as hospital operators, they're in the medical repair business, shouldn't they be in the wellness business? Could we design a neighborhood that would be a model for active living by design, get people into fresh air, sunshine, and interaction with one another, and keep them out of the hospital? So that, that in the end, was the inspiration for the Lee Health Village. Just a bit about process, which is illustrated here by a project in South Downtown Atlanta. What we try to do is create, in bursts of activity, an information-rich environment for the leaders and decision-makers. We're not gonna make those decisions for you, but we'll lay out choices and we'll explain paths forward and what's, what's easy or medium or difficult. And so that kind of work we're doing for many cities around the country, including South Downtown. You probably know Atlanta a little bit. That's Peachtree Street. And what we had to create was another visualization of what that could be if the space between the buildings was given as much importance as the square footage and the number of units and parking spaces inside them. And so I'll just show you that example as kind of typical for us because we're constantly working within contexts that have a deep history and maybe historic buildings, historic street grids, and so on, complicated land ownership patterns and what have you. But that, that shouldn't stop you. Chair?
So you can see, these consultants are extremely well-qualified and just really excited about the potential of working here in the City of Bradenton. So now what I'd like to do is go over the components of the contract in more detail. So essentially, there are four phases to this process. The first phase will be research, review of past work and current information. And from that, we'll get an analysis map. Will, there'll be preliminary economic analysis done, base maps, site visits and analysis, stakeholder interviews and meetings, and then there will be a draft Bradenton blueprint plan. In Phase Two, we will collectively identify three special area plans. And those designations will come through technical meetings, then there will be draft concepts, and then an economic review of scenarios and special area plans. So I want to remind you, during this whole process, you will be engaged. So your, your wishes, your, your desires for what these areas are and, and the areas that we actually identify, you will be part of that process. identify, you will be part of that process. In Phase Three, we'll be revising and refining the Bradenton blueprint, looking at the special areas. There'll be illustrations and renderings done of those areas, and then a summary report and implementation strategy. Super important. I just want to stop here and say, this will be a living, breathing plan. It is not going to sit on the shelf and gather dust. This will be a living, breathing document that will be executed and implemented going forward. Phase Four, they'll submit the draft plan, and we'll review it. We'll do fine-tuning again collectively, and then final documents will be presented for your approval. So the timeline is essentially approximately eight months-ish. If we, so, eight months. So initially, we would start in June, if you guys approve today. And that's where the analysis and site visit will take place. August, September, we would prepare special area plans. October through December, that's where all of the development strategy will take place. And then January, February, the plan revisions and presentations. So pretty quick timeline. And what are the deliverables? Obviously, the blueprint for the renewal of the urban core. There will be three special areas identified, and we will have day-one action items indicated. The planned cost is $179,640. There is an added expense not to exceed $20,000 for reimbursable expenses, so our total cost is $199,640, well within the budget that we identified earlier. So how is this going to be different from before? The Bradenton Area EDC has demonstrated success with strategic planning. We will begin our third strategic plan in January of next year. The two previous plans, we have achieved essentially all goals in both of those plans, and that's because we were incredibly engaged with the consultants. We wanted to have goals that were achievable with those plans. And so the engagement of the EDC in this process is extremely important. We've got demonstrated success. We know how to manage consultants. And you can count on us to be extremely engaged in this process. And with that, I wanted to debut the sizzle video that the EDC created, along with our marketing firm, Digital Collective, about the city of Bradenton as it is today. And you'll see from this video, we've already got amazing things going on in this city. But just imagine, when we get this renewal in place, what the future will hold.
Welcome to the city of Bradenton. A thriving hub where opportunity meets an exceptional quality of life. For business leaders, Bradenton is a city on the rise, offering a pro-business environment, streamlined permitting, and a supportive network of entrepreneurs and innovators. Our strategic location near major transportation hubs, and a growing talent pipeline from local colleges and universities make Bradenton the perfect place to expand your company or launch your next big idea. Whether you're a tech visionary, a healthcare expert, or a creative entrepreneur, Bradenton offers the resources and support to thrive. Here, success doesn't come at the expense of lifestyle. Enjoy a community where work-life balance means sunsets by the river, a vibrant art scene, and family-friendly neighborhoods. Discover why Bradenton is golden, with opportunities for business leaders, skilled talent, and dreamers alike. Build your future here. Make Bradenton your next move.
So that's just one of the marketing tactics that we have in place right now. So with that, we're happy to entertain any questions you have.
Questions? Who wants to be first? Ms. Coker?
Well, not really a question. I mean, this is exciting for me, something I, you know, looked forward to getting a great plan in place, because I was involved with Downtown by Design, and I really think having a plan and working the plan was key to a lot of the successes that we have in the Riverwalk. I also was on the DDA at the time. We went into Form-Based Code, and I like a lot about Form-Based Code, but there are a few things with that, especially, as you said, with the street design, the loss of trees, and the real closeness onto the street. And I like to kind of address that when we're doing all this. But that's probably for a later time, but I'm excited about this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kramer?
Thank you. And thank you all for the presentation. You too, sir. I guess the one question I had was, with the plans we've had in front of us before, and then all of a sudden, we get basically the work product that comes, and we are like, "This is nothing at all, what we are talking about." What insurances, what assurances of oversight will you provide to make sure our expectations are met on this project?
Sure. Obviously, extremely important. As I mentioned before, we have experience, significant experience, working with consultants. I think oversight in the process is very important, clearly communicating what your expectations are. And again, the plans that we have produced for the EDC have been extremely successful. They are living documents. We refer to them all the time. Maybe-
Victor.
Victor, I'm so sorry. A sudden, it just escaped me. Victor, if you want to address another aspect of this.
Well, Vice Mayor, I'll just tell you that we will advise and promote as interactive a process with all of you and the rest of the leadership team as you can stand, because you don't want to get all the way to the end and then find out what's in the work. You want to see that early on. So that will mean, we will bring up some things and say, "Did you mean like this?" And for confirmation, to check and see. And so I hope that you'll all lean into that interactive process. It makes plans better. There's an old saying, "The best plan is made by many hands." And what we have found is that if we push you to interact with us early on, and we'll get a better plan at the end, and it won't be that big a surprise at the end, is we don't get to pull a sheet off of an easel and say, "Here it is," because you've already seen it. You'll know about it. It won't be a big surprise. That said, you also probably won't achieve 100% consensus on every little line item of everything. And so it's important to, for us to select from among the universe of things you could do, those things for which there's enough consensus that they can go into that action step on the day after you adopt the plan.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kramer, a great question, because we, you know, are dealing with something right now that we went through, and when we got it, we, I mean, my jaw dropped to the floor. It's like, even if it was a good plan, how do you implement it? And there's some areas of it that can't be implemented. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So that's why we're a little skeptical on what's next step. Obviously, we did meet last night and talk, and we said, "Let's go to Andrew, let Andrew say a few words." And then Andrew never got to say a few words, because we talked about exactly what you're talking about. If we get this great plan on the books, and it's not implementable, then what's it worth? What's the value of it? But that was so important to hear in your explanations, and I know you went through a little bit now, because, again, this business meeting, trying to get information. But I was impressed with the way that you were able to say, "This is something that you want to come up with, that then you can implement in a quicker fashion, and it's something that will be targeted." And when you leave, the whole plan doesn't leave. We have the EDC onboard. And that was why, one of the things, when I became mayor right away, that, you know, it was important to engage the EDC as a separate outside entity to come in, because they were going to be able to do that. They're working with Manatee County, and when you can say, because there's times that things are going to, people want to be in Bradenton. But Bradenton is 14.4 square miles. Manatee County with Inside Bradenton in it is a lot bigger. So there may be some collaborations that we can do with both communities that say, "Hey, they can put part of their administration here, but they've got their big factory over here." Something that can work, and that was important. And so I think the value is there, not only having the consultant work through the EDC, but also pushing that next step of actionable items. We're going to have some actionable items in City Park coming over the next couple of years. So that is something that we're going to see. But how is this plan going to tie in to that? And I've said this a lot, with that area, Village of the Arts, our downtown, which starts at Main Street but spreads to the other streets, hits the Riverwalk, and goes all the way over to Old Manatee. If that is connected in a way through this, it will be unbelievable in the urban renewal. You know, because again, it's going to be things happening, but the urban renewal, going back to why cities left 50 years ago and went to malls. And we realize that was good at the time, but people want to be in a core that is more manageable and walkable, and biker-friendly, other things that can happen. And that's why I think this plan will be more manageable in a good way. So we've got Councilwoman Barnaby, and then Councilwoman Moore.
Well, thank you. I think one of the hardest jobs for me as an elected official is the push and pull of our community from our young citizens, and then we have retirees. We have like this disappearing middle group. You've got people that may be here for the next 50 years, and you've got people that may be here for the next five. And for me, it's a difficult thing to try to weigh. Change is going to happen, and I'm famous for saying, "The only thing that likes change is a wet baby." Change is going to happen, or can change be directed? And that's what I see with trying to do this. Everyone knows I have two sons. One is living in England, and the other is living in Texas. And right now, I don't see either one of them coming back here, because they both have said there's nothing here for them. As a mom, that hurts. As an elected official, that kind of frightens me. So I think it's important that we do the reinvestment and the reinvigoration that we need to see in our downtown area, because if your downtown is more valuable, and those of us that sit up here and have to deal with a budget on a yearly basis, if your downtown is more valuable and brings in more ad valorem taxes, then that makes the tax burden lighter on those individual property owners out in the neighborhoods. That's what I'm going to be looking to see. Can this plan translate to where it actually helps the people from Ward Five to Ward One? That's what I want to see.
Councilwoman Moore?
I, I feel like this is expensive. This is a significant investment. And so I, that makes me nervous, obviously. So I just want to make sure that we are looking at those past plans to see what worked and didn't work previously. I have concerns about how much implementation then would cost, and are we, you know, I want to factor that into our expense in hiring the EDC, hiring you all. And then finally, I already have ideas. I'm not a planner, and have not written any books, but I have ideas about revitalizing downtown, and with that historical, with that eye for previous history and what we've tried before, and what has maybe worked and not worked. And so I absolutely think that keeping us apprised on a regular basis is key, because I will be very disappointed if those special areas don't accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, their selection, and then what you plan for them, in what I think is a shared common goal of revitalizing downtown and having it be a more economic, thriving I think that that's it. I just want to express those concerns, because I do have them.
That's very helpful. Mayor, if I might just- Just one second, Mr. Dover. Mr. Perry, we've talked about this before. We've gone through things, and obviously, you know, I'm very frugal when doing things, and a lot of times like to do things ourselves. But if we created an economic development department, which you've done in other jobs you've had, so when you talk about finances, what would that be in in-house, having basically something like what the EDC does and what we would do with consultants? If we really brought it totally in-house to have a department to do that, what do you think the annual cost would be?
Well, thanks, Mayor. I've been asked that question by some counselors currently, as well as prior counselors that asked me that. And, you know, for some, for a location the size of Bradenton, given the dynamic of the population of Bradenton, heavy tourism obviously coming through the area, things like that, you know, I couldn't see being able to do it with anything less than a staff of three to five people and using consulting contracts anyway. So, you know, I think a reasonable investment for something the size of our budget, the size of our community, the size of the surrounding community, would be well into a million and a half-plus dollars, frankly. And when, you know, I heard that it's expensive, every dollar's expensive, because it's the taxpayer's dollar. We all understand that. But in the grand scheme of things, I think it's a great investment, because the city spends hundreds of millions of dollars. Both ourselves, the county, spends billions of dollars. The GDP from this area is in the billions of dollars. And to make an investment, basically, that looks at where we've been, where we are, where we want to go, how to maximize the economic development that does look at, you know, renewal, reinvigoration, and reinvestment, I think it's a pretty forward-looking undertaking for us to pursue. I think you also have to look at, great discussions up here, and the discussion about, okay, well, downtown, or the City Park area, or the east side, or whatever. I think it's important to look at how it interplays with each other. What would make people from the west side, from the south side, from the east side, come downtown? Those are good questions. There's a huge tourism component of people from outside. My friends from St. Pete come here. I go to St. Pete sometimes, right? So we have the local attraction as well. But I know that the city is dedicated to some of these projects, like the downtown redevelopment and City Park. City Park is a very complex beast, let alone to build it, but how it develops as a community, because you have that area we're talking about development that looks like, you know, currently, we have spring training there. It's a great time of the year, right? Great facility for a lot of different reasons, both for the local community as well as outside. But then you have its connectivity to Ninth Street and potential downtown. If you go to the east side, you have 301. If you go to the south side, you have 17th Ave. And on the north side, 13th. And how that all connects with the Village of the Arts that's in the middle, the Tamiami Trail, we have millions and hundreds of million dollars of attainable housing potential, the CRA with Dr. Burton that looks out and has the possibility to bring in literally billions of dollars in reinvestment increment to that area. Those are complicated things. They are tremendously complicated things. And again, the downtown issue that we've looked at with Westminster, and maybe the connectivity with Old Manatee. I'm glad I don't have to do it. And I look forward to you having these discussions with my bosses here on council, the community, the professionals in the real estate community, the commercial business community, the education community, the MPO and our government partners. Yeah, a lot of work.
And I think one of the things that we did talk about last night is, it's easy to get plans sometimes, and whether you agree with the plan or not, it's how you implement that plan. And some of the things that we've done in the last five years is we're implementing some of the things that we see are going. And again, City Park's easy to look at. Some of the other Riverwalk, a little bit of Riverwalk kind of re-engaging one of the areas, especially Rossi Park, with some of the things that we've been able to do. But I think it's so important, when you look at starting a department in the city that's 1.5-plus million dollars, give or take a little bit, compared to what we're going to pay for this, it is a good deal. If we look at eight or nine months, that now there's something implementable. And the reason I say that is because, you know, you could give us a plan that it's great, but if there's no private investment, if there's no public investment, then what good is the plan? Or if the plan is not investable. And that's what, that we talked about. We talked about- We talked about when Mr. Bell in the early nineteen hundreds came and started his department store at that point on Main Street. Well, he invested. You know, we talked about some of the things with the Rockefellers and the Vanderbilts and, and all of those that put the money into it. Mr. Perry and I have probably had over the last four years, five or six or more, Mr. Perry, people have come in and one of the things that you said to me was, that's a great plan, uh, as far as outside investors, but are they funded? Do they have the backing? And even if they did, do we have the ability to give it to them? And I think that's what this does. Some of the other things we're doing with the infrastructure that we're starting to fix, not just the things we have to fix, because we've got to face it and fix it, plan that I'd want you to understand totally, but also the things that we want to do to make it better. And, and that's important, and I think so. Financial-wise, I don't disagree with you. When you look at, at a, in a single item, it may seem like a lot of money, but when you look at the totality of the picture and what the longevity of it can be, it's not that expensive. Because again, it's running a business and sometimes it costs a little money to make money. And when you can all of a sudden, within twelve months, possibly have some plans that people are willing to invest in, and they ask us that every time they come here, well, what's the plan? And I think with the EDC being involved, we have a master plan of our Manatee County that throws into the cities. And I'm hoping that Palmetto's listening now, that Palmetto is looking at some of the things that they need to do to have their plan, but it all plays into the master plan of Manatee County. And the islands can jump on, obviously. They had a reset with some of the damage they had last year. You know, we had to fix a lot of things, but we didn't have as much of a reset, except for some of our homeowners that have to still aren't reset. So, that's, that's another thing. Um, no, I, I just think that there is opportunity and it's one of the things you've been talking about the whole time, what's our strategic plan? This unfortunately, and unfortunately, from what we found from the last one, didn't in most opinions, give us that next step. This, I believe, does. So, Mr. Dover, you wanted to say something?
Well, just to say, I'm very encouraged by this conversation because what I hear you reinforcing is the idea that you want a plan you can put to work, not just something to store. Usually when we come to a community, because planning is a verb, it goes on and then more of it goes on, uh, communities will offer to open up a file drawer and show us all the previous plans. Or they'll, in some cases, they'll take us into a closet or a room full of previous plans, some parts of which have been implemented, some, some not. And so, our very first step is to go through your closet of previous plans and studies because we don't want to rework things that are still valid and useful. We're gonna ask you to tease out for us the things that didn't move forward, including on this last, uh, planning effort, uh, last year, uh, and why, so that we know where the non-starters are. And that will avoid duplication. So, in a way, this is, and that was the basis for trimming our fee to the, to picture budget.
That's right.
Uh, we want to avoid duplicating efforts that are already, and things that are solidly in place. And that just will, uh, lead us to get into the real meat of the discussion earlier. Uh, you know, communities are constantly evolving works in progress, like giant works of art where you're collaborating with people that are not yet born. And so, imagine in the nineteen twenties, we were sitting at Pier Twenty Two last night. Imagine in the nineteen twenties, they came upon this and they looked at the fabric of an eighteen seventies town and visualized transforming it into the, well, the best Florida could possibly offer in a new century. And so, in the nineteen twenties, a lot of progress was made here. And the things people built, the growth and change that's always controversial, were making things better rather than worse because they were creating a place for people and, and elevating the city to its next stage. That's what we need to do for the twenty-first century, a hundred years later.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I might just, um, I wanted to speak to the implementation question. And what I would do is point to the accomplishments of our strategic plans. We identified aviation as a promising sector for Manatee County in our current plan. We've achieved that. We relocated, or we will be relocating Pilatus, which is a Swiss airplane manufacturer that will be located at Sarasota-Bradenton International Airport. We also are creating an aviation ecosystem to support the aviation sector. So, that's one example of what was in our plan that made sense and we went after it and made it happen. Another thing was identifying the sports performance sector. Nobody even thought about that, but it was in our very first strategic plan. And now, we were the first community, I will say, in the state of Florida that identified sports performance as a sector with IMG Academy, with our Pittsburgh Pirates here, with numerous other sports activities now that we have, but we didn't have before. In addition to that, workforce housing. We're working with a workforce housing developer to do a creative way to address workforce housing with employer-based workforce housing. We now have identified a property. We have five employers participating. We just had, um, a loan approved by the county for five point six million dollars for this project. So, those are just three examples of implementation from plans and they were implemented because it made sense when we were putting the plan together. We don't want to put things in this renewal plan that don't make sense for the city of Bradenton. That's why your engagement, the community's engagement is going to be so important for this process to be successful. So, there's numerous other things that I could identify that were in our previous plans that have been implemented, but I want to assure you that we're not an organization that sits around and says, oh, there's our plan. We use that plan and it directs us in the direction we want to go, which benefits the entire community.
All right. Councilwoman Coachman?
Thank you. Councilwoman Barnaby, you said it very well. I, I think you get the feel from just listening to us, and most of my questions were answered yesterday afternoon. Once burnt, twice shy. Simple as that. So, um, you, you're, you're doing a great job presenting it to us, you know, and, and we're definitely trying to, you know, digest it and, and, and accept it and believe it. No one has a crystal ball, that's for sure. But looking at the history of the EDC and, and their sharp eyes on you, um, I, um, I, I feel, I feel a little better than I did yesterday.
Uh, I have to say, I'm the kind of nerd that would go up to the professor on the first day of the semester and ask what was gonna be on the final exam. And you all are doing such a great job this morning of telling us what's gonna be on the final exam here. I'm very grateful.
Vice Mayor Kramer.
Nope.
Nothing else?
No.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Just one, uh, like to kind of like some, the nature, I mean, I guess maybe the nuts and bolts of just it, and when I say concern, it's really to let you know what my expectations will be. The concept of three special areas, um, but the city is comprised of, you know, it's more than three. And so, I just want to make sure that we're really, uh, to the extent that though, when we identify those three areas, that all, the entire city has buy-in to all those three. You know what I mean? Like, I don't want it to seem like it's just this one little area. Ten to fifteen acres is pretty small, um, but that ten to fifteen acres times three has to benefit everyone. So, I feel like that's gonna be a challenge.
And, and in the beginning of the process, of course, we have the, the interview stage, you know, where we interview you and stakeholders. So, so to the extent that sunshine law permits, we're gonna probably have one-on-one discussions with all of you so that you can funnel your constituents' desires and also their points of complaint, uh, you know, into this, into this process. And we, we really, you know, are, are anxious to hear what your ideas are for the three special areas because we realize that the, the small number, three areas, makes it hard to be representative of the, the complexity of all of city of Bradenton and part of Manatee County. So, we, uh, we're sensitive to that and, you know, we hope, we hope to get your input so that we can select those well. Would it be okay if I just addressed one thing that Councilwoman Barnaby said also? Which was, when you mentioned about the different needs of, of, of the, the life cycle, you know, the, of, of age groups and demographics, uh, one of our, one of our big areas of research and interest is blue zone planning and also something called NORC, Naturally Occurring Retirement Community. That's different from the villages, for instance, which is designed for-
Artificially.
Artificially. But what, what we've noticed in our, in our research is that there are places that due to their wonderful qualities and attributes, they tend to attract, uh, uh, people of a certain age demographic who want to walk and have, uh, social interaction and, and all those other things, which weren't meant necessarily to be the, the retirement community. But, uh, knowing that they have, uh, their own needs, we also then look at, at the young and the middle-aged and all the other strata. Because as, as you know, we're all on the same journey through that, through that life cycle. And so, we do approach it with empathy, thinking, how would each, uh, group benefit and, and what are their needs?
And that's, that's, as we talked, we'll get into the weeds and a workshop and a lot of stuff, and I know you're excited, but, um, let's move on. The chair will entertain a motion to move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mayor Kramer?
Uh, move to approve the proposed scope and fees from Dover Coal Partners to develop an economic action plan for the city of Bradenton in conjunction with the Bradenton Area Economic Development Corporation and direct the city, cities, I'm sorry, the city's budget section to include funding for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget to fund this project.
Second by Ms. Coker or Coachman?
Coachman, go ahead.
Ms. Coachman, all right, thank you. And we've had extensive discussion. We'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you. And now the pressure's on. Appreciate it.
I won't disappoint you. Thank you so much.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and take a recess for a few minutes for everybody to do what they need to do before we come back at ten o'clock time certain.[1300.33] You guys ready in the back? Alright. Come back from our recess and we're at a time certain ten AM on the new business of legislative appointment of police chief, Vice Mayor Kramer.
Uh yes, I believe I have to declare a conflict with this. Um so I'll be recusing myself from this vote. I have Form eight B, Mr. Rudisal already filled out, which I am gonna provide to the city clerk and I'm gonna sit down in the audience for a few moments.
Alright, thank you, Vice Mayor Kramer. Alright, as you know, Chief Bevins announced her retirement in January. Um it's something that her and I have talked about for a while, going through things and and what was the appropriate time and um with the where things are and and where we've been and and going through, I thought it was the right time to go to that next step with her retirement and went through the um process of having candidates come in and talk. Uh we had a great uh process, I believe. Um obviously, when people come in and there's multiple candidates that are great candidates, somebody's gonna be disappointed that they don't get it and that was important to me when we went through the process really to have it as a interview process as well as going through a lot of vetting. I probably met with somewhere north of fifteen police officers that are whether they were retired from the department and came back to work, whether they were our union representatives, whether they were officers, sergeants, detectives, lieutenants, no matter what position they were at, I went through and talked with fifteen. And of course, all of them were very complimentary on where the department is, they also were very complimentary on the candidates. So it it made my job a little bit tougher and after going through it, I really felt with the history, the knowledge and the ability and something that, you know, he will really bring to this department, um that Josh Kramer would be my nominee or appointee. Um and as the charter reads, it says by consent of the council. So I'm asking the council at this time to consent to that and I think it's very important that Josh will bring us into that next level of coming into a new police headquarters. Uh that's not an easy changeover, but it's gonna be something that that will be great for our department, great for our city and I believe also something that this council has done over the last five years is really made a difference in stepping up our police department's game with the salaries, the different um benefits and that's something we will still work through in a process. Also, I believe that we have an opportunity for the first time that once Chief Kramer is sworn in on July eighth, there will be another swearing in of officers that will put us at our full capacity of a hundred and thirty-three officers. So that's something to be proud of, that we are gonna be at full force within our budget and that shows you what Chief Bevin has done to change the level to bring us up to a point not only with salaries but also with um workmanship. And one thing too, we also did was we started paying for the go to the academy, which now we believe with our facility way out east, but it's a city facility, that's the um training facility, shooting range, driving range and all of that, gives us that next step up. So at this moment, I'm proud to ask um Josh Kramer to come to the podium and say a few words and then the chair will entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and thank you, Council Chief, thank you, um for helping get me here. I really appreciate that, um the confidence you put in me. I always said you were a genius um to select me as Assistant Chief all those years ago. Um now I might be the mayor who's the new genius, but we'll see. Um the motto, of course, of Braden Police Department is, the Braden Police Department's dedicated to excellence in policing through professionalism, courage and transparency and I promise you that that will continue. Um years ago, uh when I was just a officer and my one hobby is I used to love to play golf, I don't get to do that as much anymore, um but I met a retired constable from the Victoria, Australia Police, um Ian, and their motto is uphold the right. And I instantly asked, what does that mean? And it's basically to serve the community and to serve the law and I believe that's been my internal motto, to be able to do that for all the years. I was fortunate enough to be a police officer through the ranks up to Assistant Chief and then I will continue that, I promise you, continue that as your chief of police.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, it would be my honor and privilege to move to confirm the appointment of Josh Kramer as our chief of police.
Alright, is there a second? Second by Ms. Coachman? Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carries four to zero. Congratulations, Chief Kramer.
Thank you.
And that will be on July eighth, July eighth at nine AM at the historic courthouse will be the swearing in. So we look forward to uh a little bit more time on this council and then we'll uh be there on July eighth. So at this time, and and I thank you for for placing the trust in and that and again, I'm gonna say because the three candidates that didn't get the job are also in the room and it was a uh a tough decision and that's why it took me a little longer, but you know, everyone did a great job and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um at this time, we're going to take another recess until ten fifteen. Thank you. Out of recess, Madam Clerk.
The next item on the agenda is seven A and this is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance four zero five nine, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending the city of Bradenton's land use regulations, chapter three, district reg- regulations, section three point two, standard land use atlas district regulations, schedule three point two, point one, point two, permitted in special uses, mixed use and non-residential land use as atlas districts, excuse me, to add docks and piers as permitted or special use in the urban village zoning district, providing for codification, providing for ordinance repeal of ordinances and conflict, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Yes, sir, welcome.
Good morning, Greg DeLong, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development and thank you, Ms. Milton, for reading that long title for me. Um this is ordinance four zero five nine, um this is a text amendment to the land use regulations to um permit docks in the UV zoning district. Um staff was approached earlier this year and it was actually brought up in a case we had in front of city council back in January when we had a event center come in, um the applicant was requesting that we consider docks in the UV zoning district and this is for that property that was at seventeen twenty Manatee Avenue West. Currently, the uh land use regulations prohibits docks in the UV zoning district. It is actually the only zoning district in the land use regulations that does not allow docks or piers. We're not sure why, um since there is property that abuts waterways, but ironically, you can have a dock or pier in the industrial zoning district at Tropicana. So this doesn't make a lot of sense and like I said, we were unable to come up and find a reason why on this. Um so as I mentioned, staff was approached by a property owner in the zoning district requesting to add a dock. Here is just a quick zoning map showing the area that's primarily affected. Um this is on Manatee Avenue West as you cross Weirs Creek. Um there is a few properties in that area that do have docks. Um there is actually one property that currently has a dock, one has another, there's another dock that's should be permitted, but that is, we'll get that one addressed. But there is some waterways um that abut the uh frontages on the UV zoning district in that area. Um we originally proposed the planning commission that this be a permitted use. Um at the planning commission meeting, uh they did have a thorough conversation about this and decided it'd be better to make this a special use and basically that was because of the commercial properties in that area. They thought they would wanna vet them more thoroughly. So with it going to a special use, uh that would require planning commission review and then city council approval. So just putting that out there, that that was something we as staff did propose it as a permitted use, planning commission thought it'd be better as a special use. So here is the recommendation from planning commission, this is the use table, as you can see, I moved the um little X over from the permitted side to the special use side. And this is just a summary of the future land use of what the urban village zoning district is about. The urban village zoning district is primarily an area perimeter of downtown, it's walkable, um kinda has mixed uses from residential to um low income or low uh intensity, commercial, medical offices, items like that. But as I mentioned, there is residential in those areas and those typically are the ones that are approaching us with the uh request for the docks, but if we do have a commercial one come through, again, as I mentioned before, planning commission would like to have that vetted thoroughly, so they wanted to make them all special uses. So city council needs to, is encouraged to evaluate the requests based on the input from staff and the public. It is in our opinion that this is found to be consistent with the um intent of the land use regulations and the future land use element of the comprehensive plan and we do agree with uh, we are fine with the recommendation from planning commission to make this a special use. So as I mentioned earlier, planning commission met on April sixteenth, they recommended to city council approval by a four vote of four zero of ordinance four zero five nine, um the case PLN TXT dash twenty-five dash zero 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 one to list docks and piers as a special use in the land use regulations and that is what I have.
Any questions for Mr. DeLong before we go to the public hearing? Seeing none, chair will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance four zero five nine.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coachman?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna clarify, cause obviously there's two options here, right? It's either permitted or as a as a special use, so and the ordinance is kinda set up to go either way. We we left the language in there um for either, so I just want it to be clear in the motion and then um also wanna put it in the record that we will, we'll modify the ordinance based on that, just to finalize it after.
Is your motion for a special use?
Special use, yes.
Second, second. Alright, so the special use portion. Alright, any other discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Moore.
Um I just, I don't have strong opinions about this, but I wanted to make sure in case anyone else had strong opinions about per- the permitted versus the special use, given that the special use means they have to come before us, they can't just go to the planning department and whether anybody has any thoughts on that.
Um my thought is just I'd prefer to keep it special use so that we just don't, you know, make it permitted. I I still think having to come back to us in case there's some unintended consequence that we don't, that I haven't thought of.
Alright, seeing nothing else, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Madam Clerk.
Item seven B is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance four zero six zero, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending chapter sixty-two, article four of the code of ordinances to provide for overnight mooring of authorized vehicle or vessels at the public day dock located at Riverwalk Park, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances and conflict and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Perry. This is the day dock for?
Uh Mayor, this was brought to our attention through um the county and TDC. There was a prohibition that would allow overnight mooring for ve- uh for vessels at the day dock and what we wanted to do was uh try to accommodate the uh the water taxi and of course, the county um is in the process of purchasing, I believe it's uh about a ninety-foot vehicle, about twice the size of what they have now on the two uh ferries that they use right now, uh higher speed and velocity, can make the trip out to the islands and and back a great deal quicker, um and and it has an enclosed cabin area and can accommodate uh more folks since the program has been so successful for the county. But in order to do that, they need mooring area and so we're working with the county both on um some technical um marine type issues regarding dredge and 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 things like that, but they came upon that prohibition in the in the permit for the paperwork and we passed an ordinance when we initially put the day dock in that did not permit overnight mooring. So to to modify that ordinance, the proposal for the amendment is before you and of course, the amendment specifically says that it is pursuant to, um overnight mooring has to be based in pursuant to and permit it only with um an intergovernmental agreement um with a with another government entity that operates a transit service.
Yeah, and I know there was some question at the beginning, could we even have the service there because other private businesses have come and what it is, is that's transportation and that has, why it's been created in the way that it's for those boats because we are seeing huge success getting four hundred cars a week off the road that actually, or day sometimes, that actually is now even being talked about with taking this from downtown Bradenton all the way to downtown Sarasota with this new boat coming in. So um this is one of those things that I think could win transportation national awards through our MPO and different possibilities.
Absolutely.
And it's been um ultra-successful and it's it's a great staple for our community. Um so if there's no other questions, I'll open up the public hearing and then we'll discuss. Alright, um chair will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Coker?
Yeah, um I just wanna address, I've gotten some calls about some issues with derelict boats, mooring and I I did find out that there was no mooring allowed on the river, but there are some area, there are some areas, Palmasola area.
Right, which is different than this specific, but that's.
I know, but that's, but but I do also know that Sarasota and Manatee County are now discussing having mooring areas. Do we need to be identifying the um specific area where this is gonna be? I don't want anybody to think that they could.
It's on the day dock only.
It does, it does identify that specifically? Okay.
Authorized vessel at the public day dock located at Riverwalk Park.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure that we don't have.
Some unintended consequences, right?
Well, yeah, that people think that they can go more just because we're allowing this and I, this is gonna be restricted to this. Okay.
Yep, I believe that's correct.
We've, we've, just on that point of a quick, Mayor, we've received inquiries from different commercial folks that wanna do dolphin tours and other types of things and we tell them basically that they're prohibited because there is no overnight mooring and it's not a commercial pier. There was also some agreements that were initially related to funding, uh that it was for public access for itinerant travel and 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 not commercial businesses. So we stand on pretty good ground um regarding that type of uh application for either commercial use or or mooring.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Would we need any particular signage to state that?
It's on there now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's on there now.
It's on there.
No overnight, yeah, no overnight mooring.
I mean, to update it though.
And I do believe.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, once, once the future comes, we're gonna have, the TDC is gonna come to us and ask us for um some opportunity for them to um really improve the signage and different things on that, so and that will be taken care of by them, but the council will have a chance to prove that.
I think they've commissioned actually some work on the signage as well and they plan on really showcasing um the Riverwalk and the the uh the Friendly City emblem and the city of Bradenton and also some directional signage because of course, a lot of people park at our parking garage and I'm often out there when I'm running, they're like, do you know where the, where the uh the ferry is? And you know, give them the directions over there, but it's not marked particularly well. There are, it is currently marked, but they're gonna enhance that. It it'll be a great addition in my opinion, yep.
Especially with the new boat, that'll be a lot more.
Yeah, the boat's several million dollars, I think it's about four.
Three and a, three point four million, yeah. Alright, so the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance four zero six zero. Second.
Second by Ms. Barnaby. Any other questions? None, we'll start the vote to approve ordinance forty sixty in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Approved five to zero. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item eight B is architectural and engineering change order for the Bradenton Police Department Headquarters.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Uh I wanted to bring this matter to your attention as it relates to um the architectural services contract um for the Bradenton Police Center. Um it, we 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 run into, I guess about, probably about twenty-two months ago, um I was approached uh by by the architectural firm that was selected for this project, AECom and uh I was approached to sign what was called Change Order Five and and approve that ultimately comes up through my office and I had some meetings with them and asked them, well, what's Change Order Five about? And really what it was about is that under the original proposal for architectural services um that had about a, I wanna say about a two million dollar price tag, uh it contemplated an eight uh uh an eighteen million dollar project that was about thirty thousand square feet. Um it's written out that way, the 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 original proposal, I have a copy of it, it it's rather lengthy and it had the various architectural components of services that were in there. Um when the project went to programming and based on um a totality of 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 future growth needs and other types of programmatic needs, the project grew. At one point, it was as high as sixty thousand square feet. We're in thirty thousand square feet now, but we, it's tight in there and I think.
We're fifty.
It.
The current location.
The co- the current is is thirty. Yeah.
Thirty.
Yeah, yeah, the the current here in in city hall.
Oh, current here?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought you were saying the current contract.
Right, no, no, no.
It went from thirty to fifty.
Right, right, yep. And and so, you know, it's what Councilor Kramer talked about often, I've heard him say, where we we overgrew it the day we walked into it type of situation, I, you know, that's probably not uncommon by the time everything happens and all, but uh what ultimately happened was they sat down with me and uh this was, I wanna say, I think early June of twenty twenty-four and they said, so under the contract, you have to pay a percentage of what your overall construction cost is and the construction cost now is is uh thirty million dollars, uh thereabouts, I'm kinda using some estimates, it's a little bit higher than that. So what ended up happening was I said, well, let me look at it and 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 try to figure it out a little bit and I had several meetings with them and there was deductions that were related to services they didn't provide and they agreed with that, they were fairly minimal and everything, but at the end of the day, towards the end of the year, they said, well, you know, we've submitted payment and 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 uh Change Order Five for approval and I said to myself at that point and to them, I said, that's gonna have to basically be looked at much, much closer. And so uh low and behold, in January of this year, they sent a letter that said they were going to uh the suspend services because they hadn't been paid and the agreement had not been approved and I said, well, you can talk with some folks that that at at the council, you can come to council, you can do what you wanna do. And so then we got the letter about suspending services. I got with them and I said, let's have a meeting and and try to figure this out a little bit and I sent them the letter to Randy Major, basically, um explaining a little bit about what our concerns were with a variety of different um charges within that change order and the possibility of reducing it. I frankly told them, I said, I think the mayor and the council is mad at me, I think they're mad at the police chief and I know they're mad at you, uh frankly, and I said, we have to get this resolved. At the same time, I basically with Ms. Rudisal's assistance obtained um a construction li- At the same time, I basically with Ms. Rudisell's assistance obtained a construction litigation attorney to consider where our legal position was, and that was Doug Peebles. And so he looked at my letter, he looked at their response, and he said, there's some things that are legit in your letter, and you need to be assertive and try to get reductions, he said, but at the end of the day, the arbitration provisions of that contract and the control over it and the tacit approvals that had occurred through it by us telling them, yeah, we're okay with that, build, you know, give us that size, do that, we need this, need that, that kind of thing ran up the price. And he said, you're not going to, his opinion was that we would have some challenges, because clearly we owed more money on the contract, because the contract contemplated an $18 million facility. By the time we built the facility that was contemplated at $18 million, it was 50, it was actually at 60,000 square feet, it was pared back to 53,000 square feet, which it is now in final construction. It also has a garage on it that's about $7 million, which is probably necessary, and that's considered in there. And so pursuant to the AI contract, which is the American Institute for Architecture, they get 6.77% of the total construction cost. What I said, we need to pare that back. And so they operated in good faith, in my opinion, and we had a meeting, and they were able to pull that back. They initially asserted that they were owed $1.28 million under Change Order 5, and they agreed to reduce it to 934,000, because we pulled back some what are called supplemental post-construction, not post-construction, but construction administration services. I was able to shave that off. I got with our, I got with our CMR contractor that's building it, and we were told, yeah, we think we can work around that and shave those services. And then ultimately, they shaved a little bit more, and we got them down to, I think it was 889,000. So we got them to drop the better part of $350,000 off it. There's no doubt that the project is much larger than what was initially contemplated. There's no doubt that the contract has a provision that pegs their compensation to the total construction cost. There's no doubt that the construction cost is fairly significant. And according to Mr. Peebles, as well as other attorneys I've talked to on this, in my own opinion, I don't think it would be worthwhile to pursue litigation, arbitration alike. We need to finish the project. Most of what they were asking for was they were entitled to, they operated in good faith to pare back the services to get us within a reasonable area. It's a great project, it'll be completed hopefully in about 15 months or so, and it should provide, you know, many years of future capacity for the police department. And I just wanted to explain that to you a little bit.
I think an important factor to go through it also is, when you looked at the $18 million, 30,000 square feet, when we put that in there as a placeholder to a point, talking to other architects and different people and going through the construction phases of things, that $18 million that day for 30,000 square feet might have been good. With the economy that we went through a few months later, everything is 40% more. So 18 million for 30,000 square feet would be closer probably to 26 million for 30,000 square feet.
Absolutely.
And so to say that we've gone up from what the original bid was, you know, and we didn't have a parking garage then. So when you really look at it, and if you read any of the comments that came after our groundbreaking, that other areas, and I won't specifically say where, but are talking of six-digit million, hundreds of millions, 100 million, and we're getting a very state-of-the-art facility that will last us a lot longer as a police station, not an office building. So, yeah, I would have liked to have been 18 million. But I think when you really look at the logistics with, you know, some of the situations we went through, I think we're going to be in a good space, and I think we'll have the facility that will take us into that next couple of generational parts of things.
I think that's a good analysis. At that time, reflecting on your comments, we had looked at about three or four different stations. Done Eden was one, I think Palmetto and a couple other ones that were similarly sized. And of course, that was before the price escalations for all these raw materials and labor had escalated significantly. And we built a fire station back, right when I got on, and that was, I believe, 2.7 million. And it's a little smaller than when we're building it, that's now $8 million. And so that's kind of, proof is in the pudding as far as price escalation. I don't think anybody doubts that there's been significant price escalation in the construction, both materials and labor markets. You talk to any contractor, residential, commercial, industrial, or whatnot, and they're like, yes, it's outrageous how much it's gone up. So that was a piece of it for sure. And then, you know, what was necessary to have a properly programmed police station and have that additional capacity was important as well. If you look at it from a value perspective and say, well, let's talk square foot construction cost, right? And you're looking at basically 53,000 square feet with the garage and a rough number of $35 million all-in type cost, the math of that's going to come out to about $700 a square foot, basically, right? 35 divided by 50, that type of thing, or a 5. That's pretty competitive. $700 a square foot for that type of facility, it's a specialty-type facility. We're going to be on the fire station, I think, close to about 550, closer to 6 maybe on total in. And so, you know, different levels, you look at it, it is an investment by the city. There certainly were some issues, and I've talked to you in private about some of those concerns, I think each and every one of you, as far as the construction management and budget control on this project. But all in, it's going to be a pretty good value, in my opinion. And we have to be mindful, we didn't have to have land cost procurement. We did have to do the take with Verizon of that historical property behind it. There was also significant costs related to site development because of the water tower next to it and because of it having been a previous gas plant. I photographed some of the stuff we found underground, and it's just amazing when you look at this stuff. It was like 1940s vintage types of infrastructure underground work. We've done what was called a SUE on it, which is a subterranean underground examination, and found a lot of things in there that were under the dirt. And so that made it a little trickier. But by and large, I would not say that this project is out of line in cost.
Questions?
I have one.
Ms. Moore?
We have had a chance to talk about this. When you say pare down services, I guess my goal is to make sure that going forward, we will not be continuing to have to have this conversation. So if we're pairing down services, I want to make sure that we really can eliminate those services, and also to the extent that we need to talk to our architect or our CMR about this, you know, maybe not happening again, how do we feel about that going forward? Are we feeling like we're going to be, this is it, and we're landing here and?
I would reform the selection process for the architect, the cost control and budget controls.
For future.
For future projects.
Just like form-based code, we learned a lot after the fact, and, you know, this, we've learned a lot after the fact that some things you.
As far as it's not happening again, I don't see anything of this magnitude happening again, but I got to tell you, I mean, you know, you were at the site and you could see them laying plank on the flooring for, which is the concrete for the deck on the parking garage. But we believe we've investigated everything underground, but who's to say that an Indian burial ground isn't under there when you go a foot deeper? I mean, you know, when you start doing the construction work and site excavation, which they've done mostly, the relocation of the water utility out along Manatee Ave, it has to do kind of from the, there's a high relay pump, and then it does a bend, couple of 90s, and then it kind of heads west on Manatee Avenue. We haven't done deep-level excavation in there, but we have done boring, and some of the sewer work was done there, not indicating anything problematic. There was some environmental contamination on the take site that was a prior Verizon property that required us, we didn't find anything, but the plan that was already in place by DEP for the brownfield designation at site did require certain protection levels for de-watering, meaning if you find certain content within the dirt, you got to de-water, you got to take it off-site, or you got to clean it on-site. That gets expensive. The good news is, we didn't find too much from a chemical qualitative analysis of it that required extensive, extensive cost associated with that type of remediation. Yeah.
All right, so is this something?
I don't really, don't think I need anything, but I thought I definitely, you know, have a responsibility and obligation, yep, to address it.
All right.
That's it.
So then we have C, City Administration, which is contract for purchase and sale for 2502 Riverside Drive East.
Do we have kangaroos on the roof?
No, we have Mrs. Coachman.
No, 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 I don't.
She's doing this, and it's making noise.
I don't know if today is the day, but we are bringing in temporary cooling units. Yeah, it could be that. I'll have to find out for you in a couple minutes, yep.
I think that I'm.
Yeah, I don't know why. Yeah, I wouldn't think we hear that from down here, but perhaps.
That is not you.
It's not me.
It is not you.
This dog.
It just happens when you start.
We have a bad habit, if you haven't noticed, of allowing certain work happening during our council sessions.
Running outside, different meetings.
Right, right.
Well, we won't stand in the way of air conditioners, though.
We're not standing in the way of progress either, or a clean city.
Right.
Well, the leaf blower maybe.
For five minutes, right.
Friendly City's beautiful.
So the matter before us is basically for the city to purchase a property at 2502 Riverside Drive East in order to put a temporary, what's called PAC, lift station at that site then in place of Lift Station 13. Kim Clayback is here, and she can probably address anything technical. But we had spent a good deal of time trying to come up with a way to address the challenges related to Lift Station 13 and the potential for failure of Lift Station 13. And ultimately, our engineering folks and public works felt that it was necessary to put a temporary PAC in while we engage in building out and improving the sizing and capacity of a permanent Lift Station 3, which is about 60% design right now, a collection system that will address about 170 homes and a lateral system from those homes that virtually, most of them are in the rear lateral, and we have to basically bring in plumbers, that is not utility contractors, those are going to be plumbers. And so it's a fairly ambitious undertaking, but it's necessary because of the position of those homes and the system in a high flood area along the Manatee River on the east side of town. This is basically a purchase of that property in order to situate it where we think it would be best suited. And this is going to be a photograph of a rendering. We get to go on that?
She'll get it on.
I'm doing it right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's going to be temporary?
So as you can see from the rendering, it'll be completely shielded and surrounded and fenced and accessible. It has certain components that have to be above ground at a certain level, above the base flood elevation. Obviously, there's a great deal of plumbing, valve work, and that doesn't indicate a generator that I can see in that rendering, but there'll be a high-capacity generator as well. That will be able to basically service those 170 homes as a bypass to Lift Station 13. I think you've heard me talk a little bit about Lift Station 13. It's real old, it has deteriorated from about a 16-inch width of concrete to four inches. It's typically underwater when there's high floodwaters. As a stopgap, we put a bypass pump and a generator under there. Most of that was underwater during the storms last year. If it's hit again, it could compromise the entire area. Now, we have talked with the community, and some folks have said things like, well, we're willing to take that chance. If you take that chance and it compromises that area, I think it's important to know, your best bet is to go up into Upper Manatee County Road in the county and look at what Woodruff is doing there. Because what will happen is we will not be able to put piping under there, we will go above ground with probably, what, 12, 18-inch big pipes, raw bed system? It has to go above ground. And it'll go all over the place to try to get to wherever we have to build a temporary lift station at that time. Upper Manatee County Road, the reason why I use that as an example, is as you head up towards the bridge, I guess that's going to be north, that whole pass from State Road 64 up to where the bridge is, the new bridge, it's all heavy, heavy construction with piping, relay pumps. I mean, there's a bypass pump every, I don't know, least quarter of a mile. And we don't want to be there when we can avoid that and put something in place on a temporary basis. Having this in place at that location provides us the ability to do that, and it provides us the ability to do it in the best way possible. It doesn't, Derek, it doesn't in any way impinge on the line of sight, because the location of that particular property and where we would put this would not impede line of sight, which would have to happen if we put it on, quote, "the pork chop," that's right at the corner. It also is closer to Minhole 2, so it's a little bit probably more efficient than actually taking the extra, I don't know, it's probably 25 yards down to the river from there. And it also provides us the ability to control the site. So that's why we're asking for it. We did get an appraisal for the property. We believe we were in about, I think, I think about 5% over appraisal value. Corey can do the math on that, but I'm pretty sure the appraisal value was 420 on it. And because of some other things, we thought the 441, what we agreed to with the seller, was a good price to execute the contract. Under the contract, the seller has to perfect clear, marketable title to the property, which is important, and we think it would probably be the best way to approach our overall utility problem that exists out there.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that's important that, and Mr. Rudisell can weigh in on this, this is a piece of property that we want to purchase for the use of this temporary lift station, that when everything is done to Lift Station 13, when it's fixed to where it's going to Lift Station 3, it's off the river, then that property will be back marketable. And is there a way we can do like a resolution as this council? I know that any future councils could change things, but do a resolution that the intent of this council is, as soon, as quick as possible, that that property would be turned back onto the open market?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with a resolution like that. Obviously, it's not binding on future councils, but at least to, if you want to show, put in the record what the intent is of this council, I don't have any objection to that.
All right. Questions? Ms. Moore?
I have no objection to the resolution of this council. I think that that, I think that that would be great, actually, we could commit to that. The, as far as the contract itself, I know it has to be updated, I know that this was, you know, that there's dates and whatnot, but I noticed also that it was assignable, and I don't know that we need to have that, just a small point that I'm sure Mr. Russell can look at. And I also just want to say thank you to staff for, I feel heard as far as the location. The location of the temporary was a matter of really importance to the people that are most adjacent and going to be most affected by where the temporary was placed. And so I feel like this is a really positive step forward with, you know, having residents feel like they were really listened to and whatnot. Going forward, I would like to be, Mr. Williams is not here, but I would like to be a part of the communications meetings that are being regularly scheduled, so that I can kind of have an idea of what we're working on. I know that the change, you know, I know that the work is, you know, systematic and not, nothing happens overnight. I totally appreciate that, but I think it would give me a sense of reassurance that I know kind of what is being discussed when we get there. And I think also that to some extent about the communications, I can offer some guidance in that regard. So I would, again, like to be invited to those meetings. And then I also wanted to just mention that, again, just to keep you guys like in your frame of mind as far as what we're doing, this is. frame of mind as far as what we're doing, this is the temporary that we're talking about and where we're going to locate it pursuant to our last, you know, month or so ago, motion to bring the location back to the council, but that there are two other projects that this involves the expansion of the station three and the replacement of, the design and replacement of the collection system. And I also wanted to thank staff because so far my understanding is that all three of these things are going to move full steam ahead. We're not going to wait in phases to accomplish one and then the other so that we can expedite what's going to be, you know, an inconvenience to that immediate area as far as construction and roads and whatnot. It is an extensive project, so those would be my comments.
Is that a motion to approve the sale and purchase for 2502 Riverside? Well, let's get a motion and we can do discussion.
Okay. I would happily move that, just again noting that, and I don't know if this is a matter for discussion, so after we discuss, I would happily accept a friendly amendment, but I, I mean, I don't know unless there's some other legal reason that we would make this contract assignable.
That's what I'd like to discuss, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think it should stay the way it is.
Oh, you do? You think it should be assignable?
Yeah.
I just don't understand the context in which we would assign it.
Well, so we have a motion, we have a motion and a second for Barnaby. Okay, now, did that legal part of the assignable, what's the purpose of that, Mr. Rudisell?
Well, just, I mean, it's in our benefit that it stay assignable, because if we decide to, I don't know, I've had it come up before and everybody's happy now, but then later, if there's ever an issue, and I've had it used where they wouldn't allow you, like, let's say you wanted to put it in a trust, or you wanted to put it in the CRA, or, I don't know, but they have to agree to it then, if you change the name. Whereas if it's assignable, we're not being released from the legal responsibility, but we can change the name if we want to. And I think it's in the city's best interest to keep it that way, not that we probably won't ever need to, but we don't have to get the permission of the seller in order to do that.
Mr. Rudisell?
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer. I just play.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, that was the thinking, it doesn't prejudice the city in any way, and the city doesn't have to assign it, and I think it's unlikely the city would, but it just gives another option.
Ms. Moore?
Where I was coming from, I agree with you. That's normally in the, in these residential contracts, that's the context that I see it also, which is someone is purchasing something that they ultimately are going to put into an entity, or they are maybe going to put it into a trust. I guess maybe because we're, you know, simultaneously, I'm saying I support us resolving as these human beings on council currently to put it back on the market. It seems counterintuitive to also say, but we want to have options. I can only think that we would put it in the CRA, but I also can't imagine why we would do that, because it's not located within the CRA. So, I don't know. Sure, yes, it gives us options, but I just, I don't know, it seems to me like it's kind of going against the whole, we're going to put it back on the market.
Well, I'm no longer a licensed attorney in the state of Florida.
What?
But, but it seems to me that the assignability provision is only relevant to the purchase and sales agreement. Once we own the property, we can do whatever the law allows us to do it. And so I don't know if it's worth, I mean, it would seem to me highly unlikely that we would do an assignment in the short period of time that we have a purchase and sales agreement, which is a fairly expedited schedule. That's just me. So, so I don't know if you guys want to, it's all your call about that.
I would think it would only be the seller who would, who would have an objection. I don't know why we would even be arguing on our side.
Well, again, because I'm just trying to reassure residents who have a concern about our intention for the use of the property later, you know, I could, I mean, basically where my mind is going is the replacement of the collection system and the expansion of the lift station will only enhance that area and increase value, in my opinion. I don't have a crystal ball either as far as property values, but I just, that is, that's my thought is, I just don't understand why we would need it.
Once it's, once we purchase it and it's done, though, it's done.
That is true. That is accurate.
And that was one of the reasons that I felt that it was important to push. You got to look at all the outside factors and not pay attention to them. This is the best property to do the best project and get it done the quickest as possible with then giving a future council an opportunity now that the area is fixed up, because that's, you know, I thought about it hard, what you said, Ms. Moore, about my daughter has only known that pump station there and that, and so she didn't know it was never there, and now that's going to be gone, so everybody's property value, the quicker we get this done, the quicker their property value's more, as well as the piece of property we're buying that hopefully then will be worth more and be a prudent purchase and then sale by the city, whether it's any of us up here or the next generation of council people and mayor. Yes, ma'am?
I agree with you completely, and I only, I actually didn't expect anyone to really think about the assignment thing that, in that much detail. I guess my, I'm just trying to figure out a scenario in which we would want to assign this contract for this property.
Prior to conveyance?
Correct.
I can't, I can't imagine one.
Then why are we checking that box? That's my question.
Because it's standard fare to, we're a buyer. We should have the right to do that, and we don't want a seller to dictate and that you can't, and it's just standard real estate practice. That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Looks like it's a real estate approved contract to me.
Ms. Coker?
And I will say, believe it or not, I've been in a situation where someone wanted to get out, the seller wanted to get out of a contract, and for whatever reason, we couldn't go forward because they had to, because of the wrong box being checked. This keeps our options, and there just could be an unintended thing that comes up, where we wanted to put it in the name of something else, and that's all that was trying to be accomplished before, when I was in this situation, and it blew everything up. There was nothing I could do.
I'll just say, it just, for me, I'm talking about prior to conveyance, us assigning this contract to purchase to another entity or individual, I would, the circumstance would have to be so incredibly unique for me to really like understand why would we be doing that, so I would happily amend my motion such that any assignment has to come before council for approval.
Wouldn't it have to anyway?
No, we're in the contract, the terms of the contract right now is that the city can assign this contract to some other entity or person.
We're the authorizing entity for the city.
Right, but we're entering into a contract that says that the city can assign this contract. There's no other, to my knowledge, I mean, Mr. Rudisell, are we prevented from doing that without a council approval, except for that I was just going to amend my motion?
I mean, I don't have any objection to the amendment to the motion or the concept. It would have been my expectation that it would come to council if a contract like this were going to be assigned.
Well, Mr. Perry and I would not make that decision with the, you know, way things are going and the transparency. If something changed, it would come back to council, so I don't think that that being in there is a issue, because.
I mean, you know, if I approved anything, it would be like me approving the right to transfer a property that the city has under contract to buy. I wouldn't do that, and I don't think the mayor would either, yeah, but, but.
Ms. Barnaby?
Mr. Rudisell, you reviewed this. Are you comfortable with this contract?
Yes, we're comfortable with the contract.
Okay, you're our city attorney, and that's what I needed to know.
So, Ms. Moore, did you want to leave that in and then see if your seconded or will keep it?
I will leave it in.
As is, or are we putting the amendment in?
I would like to make sure that it comes before council, if there was to be any proposed assignment.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, we've gotten the mayor and the administrator to say that. I feel very uncomfortable saying, no, we don't trust you, and that we have to leave this motion in. That's how I'm interpreting it.
I do not, that is not the intent at all.
Well, I'm not, I'm not assigning intent. I'm saying this is how I'm interpreting, so I am withdrawing my second if you keep that in.
Does it fail for lack of a second?
Mm-hmm, there's no second. All right, so fails for that. So Chair will entertain a motion. The contract for purchase and sale for 2502 Riverside Drive East as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion, Ms. Moore?
Just one more, let me just please be absolutely clear that this is not an issue of trusting anyone. This is just a matter of my interpretation of the real estate contract as it's written, and this is me just trying to clarify that any other use of the property would come before council.
All right, we've had a discussion, we have a motion and a second to go forward with contract for purchase and sale for 2502 Riverside Drive East. Start the vote in Ward five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Moving on to item D, which is emergency procurement. I had you have a couple of emergency procurements to report on. I, you've taught me how to enlarge it.
I just want to do that, I want to squeeze it.
So that he can replace it.
Yeah. Well, they tried to do something, but they couldn't get any bigger. They couldn't do it.
Think of it as job security, Ms. Milton.
They could do it and bring it out more like here.
Yeah.
Like an air traffic.
In our, oh, there we go.
That's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with like nineteen ninety-eight infrastructure.
Yeah. Yep, that's what it is. Surprised they still work.
But can we go back to the number part?
Yeah, switch it over, yeah.
Excellent. Can you make it bigger?
It's at least halfway.
Of course you can.
Isn't that what it was when we started?
So just two quick matters. Mayor Council, which is my emergency purchase was brought to our attention, authorized emergency purchase on five fourteen, twenty twenty-five by Mr. David Lindsay, the fiscal manager of Public Works, for sewer repair at Seventh Street and Fifth Avenue, the contractor C Square. We don't believe that to be related to the hurricane. The second matter, basically, is five twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, brought to me by Mr. Brenner, our facilities manager, for roof replacement of the golf cart clubhouse and car farm out at our golf course, and that is one hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. We do believe that to be mostly related to the hurricane damage. We're also just, you know, working on a problem with the foundation out there as well and have to have a structural concrete contractor try to shore up the foundation. So that is a report, and I don't think there's any official action necessary for those.
You know if that window at the clubhouse was storm damaged, too?
I kind of think it was. Yeah, I think we repaired it, though.
Okay. Did you hit it with a ball?
Brenner's telling me.
Uh, no, no, I did not. I, as bad as I played at the league last week, I easily could have, but no.
All right, Mr. Perry?
Item D is the city administration's health insurance renewal for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Would you like me to start?
I think that would be great. Thank you.
So obviously, I sit as the chairman of that committee, and Mr. Kramer, Vice Mayor Kramer for now, is on that committee. We've had several meetings over the last couple of months. We went to monthly meetings instead of quarterly meetings so we could keep up, so I appreciate our HR department really keeping that going. Mr. Perry does sit as an advisor as a non-voting member on that board with us, and several staff members, obviously, through all the departments do. After last year's situation we went through, we really wanted to keep up with it, and we still looked at possibly changing from Florida Blue as our agent and going through it. We looked at the RX benefits and everything for that. There were some different opportunities, but going through the whole thing, the board decided to stay where we're at. The year has not been as drastic as it was last year, and to leave it basically as a status quo with the RX benefits staying, because last year when we changed RX benefits, there was a lot of hiccups, and with everything going on, the committee felt that it was prudent to kind of stay status quo for a year, see where we go with a zero percent increase on either one, because we are going to have probably close to four hundred thousand? I forget the number, maybe the number, but there was somewhere we were going to be under budget this year, possibly, if nothing happens over the next several months, to start to build our reserves a little bit. But they just felt it was better, you know, there's not going to be an increase to us, and we're going to be under budget, so it was better to just stay status quo. So that's the insurance committee's recommendation to just continue with Florida Blue part of it, as well as the RX benefits, with the status quo on our payments as is now, zero percent increase on both. Questions, or Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, one thing that I did bring up when we talked about the cost, and it's because every year we get a number of emails from retirees, because the, and I know it from just sitting where I'm sitting, where I'm about to be, but basically, the seventy-five percent that the city pays for now and employee pays for twenty-five percent, basically flip flops when you retire. So for a lot of our seniors that are retirees, it's a significant hit, and we've tried in the last couple of years to make sure that they're also taking full advantage of whatever Medicare, that there was a belief that if you came off the city insurance, that you could never go back on it. Well, the Medicare plan was never really explained as part of that city insurance option. So the last couple of years, we've been able to do that, but it's for those people who aren't quite there yet, it's a significant cost. I mean, I'll just say that personally. I can say, I can attest to that. So it's, in the future, I hope we are, we still look at that and maybe as we do, make any potential changes in the future, that we always are considering the retirees, because I know I'll be still requesting that for everyone.
All right. Ms. Coker, did you have a question? Okay. Didn't know if you did, and if that's that. So I guess the recommendation would be to go with what the insurance committees has recommended to this council to move forward?
I believe so, and it was a positive recommendation to continue on with Florida Blue under the right rate proposed, to continue on with RX benefits under the RX plan. I think you did a really good job of summarizing. I'd like to thank you, Vice Mayor, now Chief Kramer, Corey, and some of the other folks that were all on there. We actually would have meetings just about every three weeks to a month.
Well, that's something I'm still going to ask, maybe not as much coming, well, from now till the end of the year, I'd still like to have more meetings, but then maybe the first quarter, we don't need it as much, but then still to get into it, because I don't want to get into a situation like we did last year.
Yeah, last year it was awful, and I think we all learned a little bit about the healthcare insurance industry as well on that committee.
Last two years, for sure.
Yeah.
More than.
Appreciate your support.
We're still recording on YouTube, so to say vultures is bad. I don't want to sound that way.
So Chair will entertain a motion to go with the health insurance committee's recommendation.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Moore, a second by Vice Mayor Kramer, and we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you. All right, Mr. Perry? Woodard and Curran?
Thank you, Mayor.
Not least is item number G, City Administration.
We do have an H also. Yours is the last one. H is planning.
Yep, 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 right. Is item G, Woodward and Curran's Fiscal Solutions Strategic Funding Plan Proposal for Fiscal Initiative Plan, that copy of which was attached, I believe, to the agenda memo and agenda item. Now, Ryan Watson is in the back of the room, and Ryan is one of the senior management team from Woodward and Curran, and first off, they have done a really, really good job, and I want to thank Ryan and his team for staffing up. They've bought in top-quality folks with expertise in wastewater to look at our plant, to operate our plant, to, and by and large, all of the employees that were for city employees that are now working for Woodward and Curran. Some of them we actually plan to retain for certain reasons. There was a couple, and they go, we like Woodward and Curran, and they actually, and Brian had the courtesy to tell us a little bit about that and said, you know, if the city doesn't want us to do that. But we're very pleased with Woodward and Curran thus far. They really have put a lot of resources and attention and planning into the operation of the wastewater treatment plant, but Woodward and Curran has about fourteen hundred employees, and they're nationwide, and Mayor and I had the opportunity, when we went to Tallahassee, to meet with their fiscal solutions team, some, a couple of the members of the team, and I believe one of them had worked for, was it SRF?
State Revolving Fund?
Yeah, yeah, and then the other, the other individual, I think it was Fred, worked for the city of Tallahassee, is the Public Works Director, really, really knowledgeable in accessing funding for utility systems. And it's really important, because when you look at what, you know, we have before us in the Face It and Fix It campaign, we we have a variety of different shortcomings on aged utility that has to be repaired, replaced, and remediated. And really, that includes, you know, drinking water, as, it, it includes wastewater, it includes stormwater. And, um, they have the expertise in, in accessing federal funding. If you remember from our workshop, I laid out a little bit of potential funding that's out there currently, right now. And one point seven billion dollars was allocated through the federal EPA in the Infrastructure Act, and it's still in, it's still in, it hasn't been pulled out or anything, to go to, I believe it was six states that were affected by, um, Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton, as well as the Hawaii wildfires. And, uh, those states are obviously southeastern United States, uh, states. And the allocation to Florida was one point seven billion dollars. Woodward and Curran had worked for, was it La Bree, Florida?
LaBelle.
LaBelle, I'm sorry. LaBelle, Florida, and had accessed similar types of funding. And it was significant funding that they, they were able to get for the, the smaller community of LaBelle. Last time, the E in funding, uh, that came down, that was very similar to this. That funding in particular, I just, I'm getting probably into too much detail, but it goes from federal EPA down to D E P. We had met with the Secretary of D E P, um, that controls those funds, and then ultimately gets administered through S R F. And Woodward and Curran has already put applications for us in to put pla, to express interest in accessing those non-competitive funds. Uh, if you would, if you were hit with these storms and qualified by virtue of that, they're grants. They don't have to be repaid. And the last time, I think it was, uh, with LaBelle, they were twenty million dollars. And so what, uh, D E P and S R F are trying to do is figure out how many people are going to apply, and how do they distribute the one point seven billion dollars? Three categories, drinking water, which of course we deal with through, um, the Everest Reservoir Surface Water Program. We have the distribution system that's related to it. There are some serious needs out there at Everest Reservoir as it regards to, uh, resiliency and, uh, purity of, of the water being, being breached by certain types of events. We've had weather events, becoming brackish, having salinity problems and other telemetry or whatever it's called type problems that becomes a chemical issue, and they're obviously generating a salty taste. Um, so we've got to protect that reservoir. There's some ways to do it. The dam was built many, many years ago, and so it would probably deal with dam enhancement. Um, then the distribution system, as we've heard Ms. Clayback talk a lot about, is about a seven-mile run, singular run, from the plant into the city of Bradenton, and there's no redundancy. So if there was a problem with that distribution, we wouldn't be able to turn valves and, you know, bring it on a parallel pipe type of thing. And so we're looking at some improvements there in the drinking water aspect. Um, then we also have, we have, um, the wastewater, um, which they call clean water under the act. And we obviously have issues related to our aged infrastructure there, uh, resiliency related there too, both in the collection as well as the treatment process there. And, uh, storm water, of course, we hear about flooding all too often here. That's just that federal EPA money. Then we're also looking at thirty-two million dollars in an allocation from the county from HUD, C B D G, that deals with some of the same types of issues, and we're looking at what we would be eligible for there. The out county, I believe, has a, a, authorized the thirty-two and maybe some change million dollars. And so that's a pretty sizable pot of money, too. We also have five million dollars in, in requests that's included in the budget that's in a holding pattern up in Tallahassee, um, that deal with some wastewater improvements as well as some storm water. Uh, and then we have the rate, and we have to do a, a, a calculation and rate study to see if we would go to, back, back to S R F and we were saying, okay, we need how much money? How much could we borrow, um, on a, a promise to budget, you know, covenant, basically, within the lending documents to budget and appropriate based on a rate increase of three percent a year, something like that? That's typically how utilities do it, to fix current things with future revenues at a certain level. And, uh, then we also have things that are on the development agenda for off-site improvements, both on this city site itself, uh, where we have our, our, our developers, uh, making commitments to pay for certain improvements to the wastewater and potable water system, too. In this particular case, you've got to increase nominal pipe sizing for water pressure and volume, because it's a high-rise building with a lot more folks in it. Uh, then you obviously have more stuff going into your sewer system, and the closest lift station is Clift Station Eight, which of course is at the end of Baccarat Boulevard and Fifteenth Street. And we need to get it off there. I think we also have a request in for D E P grant to assist with that. Is that right?
Yep.
And so we're accessing all these things. I mean, I could go on and on, but, 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 but the, the big number that you're looking at is probably a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty million dollars in, in, in funding. Uh, and most of it is, is funding that is either grant, um, or, or, or straight out appropriations. And so, so that's pretty good stuff, and, and I hate to say this, but if it had not been for these horrific hurricanes that have been so terrible for the area, that funding probably would not have been available for this type of infrastructure improvement. Uh, it goes to the adage about strike while the iron's hot, and, and it's an opportunity. This basically is a contract for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have Woodward and Curran up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, try to study what our needs are for our wastewater capital program, uh, the, the priorities, cost evaluations, um, associated regulatory compliance, and then try to develop fiscal solutions between those various categories and, and more. I just kind of laid out what's currently known and available and being worked on. I want to give a, a, a thank you to Kim, who's done this work over the years for the city. Um, I don't think people understand how complex it is to put together these application processes to D E P or the state legislature. And you have to have, obviously, the estimates of cost, you have to have just the project description, um, and a host, host of other things. And while she's, you know, doing a million other things, um, she's got to do this, too, to try to access money. Well, we need to expand some bandwidth here, and, and that's what this is an attempt to do. Uh, the money's out there, and, and you have to have, as I always say, a grant getter. That's what this is. This is the grant applicant, the grant getter, the grant administrator. It's not just one person. Oh, you got a grant person. Remember how we used to hear that? Why are we hiring a grant person? Well, you, you don't need just one grant person. You need three grant people. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't mean.
Now, one of the things I think, and with the, the upwards of twenty million dollars per project with the water, sewer, and stormwater possibilities, you know, that's something that, that without the proper paperwork, the proper, you know, to spend a little bit to get upwards of sixty million plus, because those are just those three projects we know about now, or three pools of money, and that's due by the end of June. So we don't have a lot of time to get those in. Then there's other things that they'll work. And I, you know, right now, if we can get those, plus what we got, the C D B G, D R money, we're looking at, and plus the state money, we're looking at close to a hundred million dollars right there. Plus, we're still going to be forty to fifty million short, and where else can we get it? And I think, uh, Brian's not smiling, but I think he's, they got an opportunity to have something where the team, I believe, has other avenues as well and connections that will get us to that point.
Mm-hmm.
And again.
And put together a plan. Even if you get the money, what are you going to do with it, you know? And then we got to actually deliver and build the projects. It's, it's pretty.
Plus, that keeps up with the, the, um, what you have to do to keep the project and keep the, uh, reporting done.
Right.
Because reporting is probably one of the most reasons you have to give money back.
Absolutely. It's unsupported documentation.
Yep.
No, no, it's, it's, this is just the first part of it, is kind of putting the plan together. And, you know, that, that's going to be some evaluation of our, engineering evaluation of what Kim already has, some of the stuff we've done through contracts with other folks, um, that's out there. And ultimately, those are supporting documents. Obviously, there's the, uh, the resiliency, the vulnerability plan that is required by the state as well for a lot of these applications.
We also heard something earlier in citizen comment about consultants or project managers and things of that nature. This basically does, I don't know this specific, but it gets us to that next step of, the next step of project managers for these projects.
Yeah.
And I think we're close, you know, that.
I think if, if you said, what would it take? If me and Kim went in the back room with a cocktail and how can, you know, and she's got a lot more better specifics than that, but you're looking at probably fifteen to eighteen projects, maybe twenty even, over the course of.
You're stressing her out, Rob. Stop stressing.
I know, I know, and I don't mean to do that. I really don't. But, but we don't have the bandwidth, because we would need ten Kims and three Brandys and a bunch of other folks, you know, and everything. But you can use funding from this grant to do the project manager. I, I, what I'm envisioning is if you do have that many projects going and you're trying to expedite it, when I say expedited, I'm talking about, you know, five, anywhere from what, three, four years to, 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 to eight years? Um, you got to have a, a master project manager that manages all the project managers on each project. Because you think about it, while doing the dam isn't going to be the same guy that does the, the redundant pipe, and that's not going to be someone that does all the electronics over there. There's all kinds of different disciplines and, and, and everything, and we just have never, you know, been able to attack problems like that, because, well, we probably didn't have problems like that, but with other, with, with a whole host of things, you know, it needs to be, uh.
We've seen the outcome of what Councilwoman Coker brought to us a couple of years ago, which the, the council supported, a, uh, southern group and lobbyist Tallahassee, which has got somewhere around twenty million dollars for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, basically, over the three-year period. This is something that's going to get us close to a hundred-plus million dollars, I'm confident, that is grants and different things that, without missing a beat.
Right, right.
That's my opinion. Any comments?
I don't know how you, I, I know you can face it, but I don't know how you fix it without that funding and, and, and the support.
There are motion to support.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Woodard and Curran for the fiscal initiative plan as presented and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, and as the last matter, which you pointed out, is item H, Planning and Community Development, uh, is for a resolution twenty-five fifty-one as submitted for building permit fees. You, Robin and, and, and Scott Williams are going to talk about this, the building official for the city. Um, you remember the short version about, we run a deficit now, terribly so, um, over there. And really, that deficit gets made up by the taxpayers, the gen, you know, the general fund taxpayers. And the fees are considerably lower, um, uh, uh, permit fees right now than surrounding areas. It's increasing costs, you know, for personnel that we've been putting in place, I T systems and the like. And, uh, there hasn't been a significant cost increase for several years. There was a moratorium that was put in place for many years as well, and it's kind of intinerant on, it, it changes based on, on sometimes the storm season and the like. And we would actually really appreciate due consideration. I want Robin and Scott to talk about it a little bit. And the proposal itself, if you can't do all of it now, if we could do some of it now and some of it a year from now, at least it'd be on the board, so we know what type of funding will, we have, because there are a lot of demands being put on our permitting section and the planning department right now.
Good morning. Uh, Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director, and Scott Williams is here, our, um, chief building official. Uh, I'm just going to run through some of the things that, um, I think Scott has previously presented. Um, but just for clarification, I think it's important, uh, just to go through what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, uh, what we're proposing is an increase of fees by approximately twenty percent. Uh, we are not changing the fee structure at this time. We suspect that might be something that might be coming forward in the future. Uh, but for now, we're not proposing to change the fee structure. We're not increasing impact fees. Uh, we're also not increasing our budget. Um, we are looking to maintain the current budget. Uh, the last significant change, as Mr. Perry indicated, was in twenty thirteen. Uh, there was some update in twenty eighteen. Um, and I think it's important to know where, like, the deficit occurred and where we started to, uh, experience more demands on, uh, the building, uh, permitting processes up to, um, twenty twenty, up to the pandemic. It's my understanding. I wasn't here prior, but we were re, reviewing primarily paper permits. Um, and that is labor-intensive, because you have to track the permits. People had to come into our space in order to review the permits, and then there were instances where the permits could get lost. Um, the state mandated that, uh, communities offer electronic permit processing. So, um, we've endeavored to, uh, put a plan in place to, uh, it started with accepting permits by email. Still very labor-intensive to shuffle those around. Uh, then we went to an electronic plans room, uh, which helped immensely in terms of the review of plans, but always with the eye towards implementing a system that would allow people to apply online and everything to occur online. We think that saves everybody in the community a lot of time and trouble. Uh, while you'll still see people, we're so friendly, business-friendly, and we'll meet people in the lobby. But for the most part, people are submitting and processing their permits online. They're paying for their permits online. And the permit, uh, process has been immensely streamlined. So we have seen some additional costs. In addition to that, we have staff members that, you know, um, you take somebody with good customer service skills, you train them up to understand the construction process and the terminology, and now you also have a computer program, uh, that they have to be trained in and learn how to process those permits. And that, you know, by about six months, we're ready to turn them loose at the counter, you know, and helping people, uh, directly. Um, and, and what that does is it makes them more valuable employees, it makes them more valuable to us, but also to other communities that process and permits in the same way and appreciate those same skills. So we've had to, uh, have some increases in salaries over the years, um, and, and just to retain our staff and to keep up with the industry and what other communities are paying. And so it makes sense that we also keep up with what other communities are charging, uh, for their permits, because the other communities are do the same things that we're doing in terms of implementing an electronic system, because they're required to by the state, but also training up their staff and, and, uh, making sure that they're customer-friendly in terms of being able to do everything online and not require that people come in, uh, to the permitting office. So the, the goal is to make the building department financially independent of the city's general fund. Um, and it is, that's as it should be. It's an enterprise fund. It's there for a purpose. It's there for a purpose just to run the building permits. It's not there to make a profit. We're only looking to cover our costs. Uh, and we have, while we have stayed within our budget, the revenues aren't keeping up with the budgeted costs um, that we already agreed to. So operational costs have increased. Um, there's general inflation that's increased. Uh, the, the fees, the system has been antiquated for a while now. Um, and we have to also, as I said, increase with the private sector for salaries as well, because inspectors and even permit processes are in demand also in the private sector. And if you notice what, uh, the state has been doing, um, in addition to the preemption on the increase of fees, uh, they've also, uh, passed some legislation, excuse me, that I would say has been favorable to the private sector in terms of private providers, and that's something else we, we need to talk about. So it's, um, not really put us in competition, but we still have to process those permits that even the private providers are processing. But then that private, those private providers are also competition for us in employing staff. So once we train somebody up, it, there's, there's the possibility of them, uh, turning over. So this is just to show you the, how, um, this has kind of proceeded. And so you see in twenty twenty-one, that's where we started to, um, see some, you know, while there was some, um, reduction in revenues, um, there was also some increased costs just in trying to retain staff and implement the new services that we were required to provide. So the analysis that, uh, Mr. Williams, uh, conducted included, um, basically, he looked at thirty-seven different communities and settled on five similar-sized communities, um, and analyzed them for what their permitting fees were. Um, they, and, and he didn't consider ones that hadn't updated the fee structure in the last four years, because, again, that's a timeframe where everybody was doing the same thing that we've been doing in, in terms of implementing electronic permit fees, and we wanted to make sure that we were keeping up with what the future is, is going to entail. Also, uh, we had an organizational assessment by Matrix, and they also did a sort of a mini fee study for us and found that we were still lower than most communities in terms of our fee structures, uh, and community, particularly communities over the similar size. Um, so the deficit over the last five years is averaged at eighteen. So the deficit over the last five years is averaged at eighteen percent. Uh, the four-year average is about thirty percent. A twenty percent increase, uh, would generate about, um, uh, thirty, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars, which is about the average of what our deficit has been. We anticipate that there'll be a cost savings over time with attrition as people get up and trained, so we will balance out on that. So it may, you know, if, even if it doesn't cover all of our costs, we expect that as our, our system becomes more efficient, uh, that we'll be able to do more with less, uh, in terms of staffing. Uh, and again, uh, we look back to the Matrix study and their statement that Brayden becomes in below most jurisdictions when comparing common, uh, construction-type scenarios. Uh, for new construction on residential and commercial, Brayden is below the average and is the second-lowest fee overall for those, um, in those two areas. So I, I'm sure you can zoom in and read all of this, but, but basically, the, it's a, it's a twenty percent increase means twenty percent across the board. So if you had a hundred-dollar fee for a permit, it's now a hundred-and-twenty dollars. Uh, that's what we're proposing. And, uh, just to give you an example, for a two-thousand-square-foot new, uh, single-family home, the current fee would be, um, fifteen-hundred-and-forty dollars, and the proposed would be eighteen-hundred-and-forty dollars. For fifteen thousand square feet of new, a commercial new construction, and that's about like a new Walgreens or CVS, um, the, it, the current fee would be twelve-thousand-three-hundred, and the proposed fee would be fourteen-thousand-seven-hundred. And for a residential re-roof, again, just a twenty percent increase. Uh, that's probably one of the more common, um, increase, you know, permits that we've had since the storms, storm events of last year. Um, another component to this is private provider. The state provides, uh, that we have to give a reduction in permit fees for private providers. We're still doing a lot of the work that we would do, um, for issuing permits. Um, they have an option of just doing inspections, private provider, or doing both plan review and inspections, but, um, private provider. And, um, Scott can tell you more about how he arrived at that, but he, I'm looking at the other communities. He found that the norm should be about fifteen percent reimbursement for, if they're just doing inspections with private provider, but up to a thirty percent if they're also doing plan review. We're still doing a lot of work for those permits, but we do have to provide that reimbursement per the state. And, um, so our recommendation, it's a twenty percent increase, um, uh, fifteen percent reimbursement for private, private provider inspections only, and thirty percent for plan review and inspections. We're talking about an effective date of approximately thirty days. I think we put July first, um, in the resolution. And that's to give us an opportunity to notify all contractors, uh, locally and, and, uh, put some website banners and social media posts just to let everybody know what's coming. So nobody's surprised. Um, and with that, I'm, I, I, I don't know, Scott, if you wanna add anything?
Um, the only thing I would like to add in there is to consider the fact that there's a new Senate bill coming through the floor, and it's on its way to the governor's desk for signature. The reason that these fees haven't been adjusted for many years is because of the storms, and they usually put a freeze on any fee increases. In this new Senate bill, it is language that says that upon the emergency declaration, all, all fees will be frozen for six months. So it's not a matter of if we're gonna get an emergency declaration, we will get one. So I would like to encourage you to make action on this prior to us getting locked back down, because this has been dragging for many years because of that scenario. Other than that, I really don't have much more to add to it.
Questions?
I've got mine.
Ms. Coachman?
Yeah, um, a couple of things. Um, first off, I, you know, I, I, I don't like raising the fees, uh, up front, but I understand the need and what we can. I think we've come a long way by allowing for the, uh, with Acela and getting everything more electronically, and hopefully that's gonna continue to get better. Um, all these studies keep talking about fee comparisons, all that, but I would like to see something that does a measure of performance, like, like time periods between submitting an application and when the permit's issued. Maybe some timing, um, like from requesting an inspection to when the inspection's done. Um, maybe even a, a satisfaction survey type that. I just think we need to have accountability. We're raising the costs, and the costs will be passed on, and I just would like to see, um, you know, that tied to a higher performance. Um, and, and I think it will. I think everybody's committed to that, and I think we've been working in that direction. Um, and that's, I'm not in any way, you know, trying to disparage staff in any way. I just feel like if we're gonna raise, uh, raise the fees, we need to have our level of service go up as well. And also, at one time, we had also discussed a rapid-response person or a program or something for, if there's those catalytic projects that we wanna make sure get through quickly, I don't know how we're addressing that as well. You know, permitting can make things more expensive, harder, and I would like to see us become more the friendly city, so. I, I, I feel like tw, a ten percent increase upfront, you know, rather than go the full twenty percent now, um, and then see if the ten percent increase brings up that level of service, and then maybe in a year, do another ten percent. That's just kinda my feeling on that.
Vice Mayor Kramer?
Thank you. And ma'am, for the record, we all get a little choked up when we hear what the legislature might be doing, so. Um, I was in support of this. I was about to say I agree with a lot of what Mrs. Coker says regarding this, but I fully support the twenty percent. I was ready to vote for it before, and we had to wait, but, um, I think it's absolutely necessary. Uh, a lot of things she did bring up, though, about measuring performance, obviously. I think from time to time, you've, every department head has gotten a call from one of us, from constituent who's disappointed in their level of performance that they're receiving from any department, and, uh, it's just something that I know other departments measure. I'd like to see that, too.
And you'll soon have that opportunity to be that department head.
Trust, trust me, I know.
Ms. Moore?
Um, I also struggle with raising the fees. Um, so I guess I have a couple of questions. But I also, um, I'm weighing the, uh, discouragement of commercial projects, if the fee increase is gonna do that, or residents that are just struggling with affording their, you know, and of course, I'm thinking storm people, and whether or not that's gonna hinder their ability to rebuild. Um, but I think that I, weighing that against your desire to retain talent, I think it's gonna be the retention of talent that's gonna have to, um, take precedence over my concerns about raising fees. As far as the amount, I, I, like, when you put it down into numbers, it seems reasonable, especially when my concern is the residents. Does the Matrix, when you were doing this analysis to come up with whatever, it seems to me like there's like a myriad of combinations that could be going on here, so had, was there part of your analysis, like, uh, thirty percent on commercial projects and ten on residential, or above this threshold of square footage, you could do this amount?
That would be something I'd wanna dig into on a complete, probably a fee restructure, on the way we do calculate our fees.
Okay.
We tried to stay within our existing fee structure because we were implementing Acela, and we didn't wanna add another level of complication to that process, because we had plenty of complications.
Gotcha.
So we tried to stay within our existing fee structure and find an avenue that would get us to a break-even point so that we're not demanding money from the general fund any longer to meet our budget requirements, and we could be self-supporting through the fees collected. Nobody likes a fee increase, and this, honestly, however you look at the perspective of this, this really is not a fee increase. This is a reallocation of where this money's gonna come from. My whole goal with this and this percentages would be to have the users paying for the fees, not the non-users in the general fund, and have that money coming from those who are pulling the permits and using the services rather than those who are not.
That makes sense.
Because our, our budget numbers haven't gone up. Our budget hasn't increased. Our operating budget isn't going to change. And we're doing what we can to streamline our operating budget and to make it more efficient, get it better. It's gonna take some work, because to be honest with you, prior jurisdiction I was in, I had six staff members versus fourteen here, and I had the same operating budget with my six staff members. So we're not overly abundant in cash flow, so, but we are trying to find ways to streamline that.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, I, I do agree with you saying it's, it's a user fee and, and that the people that are using it are the ones that need to pay for it, rather than the general population coming out of the general budget, so to speak. And just one comment. I find it fascinating that the state identifies these as enterprise funds, which means they have to stand on their own two feet. And then in the next breath, they turn around and tell us that we can't adjust our fees because they don't want us to. I, I just, I find that, that's, it's fascinating to me, the, the logic behind that.
Me as well.
Any other questions?
There, can I just make a fiscal comment on it? When we talk about it being subsidized by the, by the, by the general fund, um, it, it, it's kind of an important concept to be, be thoughtful of. Heidi's sitting in the back of the room there, and her budget team have to basically take a budget every year, and when we have to supplement an enterprise with general fund monies, that means we have less general fund monies to pay for things like union contracts for wages for fire and police and general service employees and all the other stuff we do. And so it's really important, because this has been a reoccurring cost to the general fund, to, to basically supplement it. And I would just, you know, if, I, I, I'm not a big fan of fee increases either, um, on, on any kind of repeat basis, but I would believe that the totality of circumstances here would support that for all of the reasons that Mr. Williams and Ms. Singer have pointed out, and the fact that it really hasn't been in touch, uh, in, in many years, and that the window may be closing a, as well. And, and, and so I, I hope you would support it, because it helps us fiscally, it helps the department itself, and it will help the delivery of service.
All right. Anything else, Ms. Singer, Mr. Williams? All right, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-five fifty-one.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. C, Vice Mayor Kramer, second by Ms. Coachman. We've had quite a bit of discussion.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna say that without any performance whatsoever attached to this, I just can't support it. I really can't.
Well, at the same time, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We've sort of put that edict to them, but that's what we expect back.
Yeah.
So I think when we ask them about that, and they say, oh, we haven't done that, well then...
But we will have already given, that's why I would, would have preferred to see it go to ten percent, and then we'll get the other ten percent as long as we see that we're getting an, a, a, a raised level of performance. I, yeah.
We, we will implement quarterly, quarterly reporting to city council, similar to the way code enforcement has been reporting. We'll, we'll give you a report on that, too, because we're able to with the new system.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may?
No one likes raising the cost of anything, but it happens, and it happens for a reason. I can't say that about our economy, but, but it happens for a reason. We're the friendly city to a fault. We often are the lowest-paying entity around here. And if we don't take a look at that, we'll lose people. And, and we lose them every day, all across the board. You know, I, I'm of the philosophy, and maybe I'm Pollyanna, I don't know. Um, I'm of the philosophy, if you take care of your people, if you pay your people, especially when you've got dedicated people that are working as three or four because we're the friendly city and we don't, we can't, you know. I just feel like if you take care of your people, the, the, the performance comes. Because right now, we have people that are so dedicated to doing a great job, and they're being paid less. So you've already got the heart, you know, I, I'm, I'm, sorry. I just, um, I just feel like we take care of our people, we won't lose them to Sarasota and Hillsborough and wherever else. And, and we take care of them, and that, that performance, that quality performance will come. It'll be the extra friendly city.
Is this about salaries, or is this about...
Well, well, we're talking about retention, and we're raising, never mind. I, I didn't really wanna get into it. We're raising the fees so that we can take care of that department, and that means people. I mean, they are real, they're, they're the, the department. I mean, they're the ones that are doing it. Oh, yeah, I guess we have some technology, too, but we got technology people that have to deal with that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to kinda go all off-track.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
No.
All right, approved four to one. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir. Please, thank you, sir.
Anything else, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, it's unfinished business. We go to council reports. We'll start in Ward five.
Oh, my goodness. In last meeting, I remember it was four, and I said, okay, be ready, because you're gonna, and I'm not. Uh, I feel like I've talked enough today, to the point now my voice is leaving me. A, as we have been having as of late, great meeting, great discussion. We're doing our jobs up here. I really feel that way. And, and we're friends afterwards. I keep saying that, and that's true, all of you out there. It's really true. We disagree with each other, and then we just go smile and have a, uh, have lunch. Uh, but, but just great things, and then recognizing code enforcement, uh, and, and, and the gardening club, and, and just recognizing that we have these terrific employees, terrific us, too, because i, i, it takes so much to be the friendly city and run this, um, this entity. It's a lot going on. Um, I, I, I think I'm gonna just stop right there, because I was gonna talk a little bit about, I just have to say it. We recognize people for their hard work during mornings like this, you know, during the meeting. I think we need to be mindful and be appreciative every day. Don't lose sight of it. Don't at all. I, I get to see a lot of, of our employees. I get to see BPD, unfortunately. Fortunately, fortunately, and unfortunately, uh, I get to see you, um, in, 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 in. We just have to be mindful. I know it's horrible raising costs to our citizens, but it's, and like one of those unnecessary, I mean, necessary evils. All right, sorry. Well, no, I'm not really. I just wanted to say it.
All right, thank you. Ward one?
Yeah, um, first off, uh, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity. It was fun, the picnic with the Public Works Department and going and serving the hot dogs and hamburgers. It was hot, but it was a lot of fun, and, and I enjoyed getting to, you know, see a lot of them, and, uh, and not just my, uh, garbage collector in my pajamas, like normal. But anyhow, but I agree, I, I, I wanna kind of agree with, uh, Councilwoman Coachman. I mean, we do have a lot of debate up here and sometimes, but I think that's very healthy. I think if we all thought exactly the same, that would not make for good sausage, so to speak. Um, I think our opinions, and sometimes they're very heartfelt, but I am glad we had that debate and don't just rubber-stamp or, you know, whatever. So I hope that, that people appreciate that with us, because I do genuinely like everyone up here. And, uh, it is really with a very heavy heart that I voted for my colleague to go and be our chief, but I, I know he's gonna be good. I, I'm excited for, um, him to bring the perspective from us, sitting here. Um, you'll have that additional perspective. Um, and you also know that we have a real heart for our law enforcement officers. And, uh, it, it pains me when I hear someone say, oh, we don't, we don't care about them, because we truly do. Uh, keep public safety is one of my, you know, priorities up here, so you know that, and we'll take that back with you. And, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, everybody, and I also wanna thank the chief. I think you've been an amazing leader. And, um, and I think, uh, we're very blessed to have had you for as long as we have.
I have one more meeting.
One more meeting. But you'll be crying at that.
No, oh, no, she, she put the cartwheels out here.
But anyhow, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, too, had a, had a nice time over at Public Works, getting to see everyone, and, and I hope that, um, they, they do know... And, and I hope that, um, they, they do know how much they are appreciated. And I hope all of our employees know how much that, that we appreciate them. It's, uh, working for government sometimes can be very frustrating and it can be, uh, not a lot of change happening very quickly. But I think that our government was designed that way back in, uh, you know, with the, the Continental Congress. They were very worried about having the soldiers representing King George show up and, and commandeer your, you know, take you over your property, your farm, your business, whatever. So government, I think sometimes it does move slowly. Sometimes I wish that we could move a little faster on certain things. But, uh, all in all, it's, it, that's the way it was designed. I would, I would like to extend my deepest sympathies to the family of Laura Baden. Laura was a wonderful person and when she was, um, healthier, participated with the Junior League and getting that organization going and being the, uh, the very strong and impactful organization that it is today. And, uh, just want to wish, uh, strength and peace to, uh, her husband Chris and her son Cory and, and all of the extended family with that. And then Mr. Kramer. I remember meeting you in nineteen ninety-eight. I'm gonna hold it together, I'm gonna do that this time. Because I know you're not really going anywhere, but-
He's right over there.
Getting to know you and your, your, your quiet confidence and demeanor. Every time you came into a situation, I always knew it was going to be handled appropriately and professionally. And you continued that here with your service with us on this side of the building. And I, I don't think that the mayor could have come up with a better choice. So congratulations.
Mrs. Moore.
Um, I would love, I didn't plan to do this, but I would love to echo both of, uh, Councilwomen, uh, Coachman and Coker sentiments that I agree wholeheartedly that robust, uh, conversation and debate is an indicator of the health of your city government. We, we all bring our, our personalities and our strengths and our backgrounds to this role and mine is very perfunctory. And so I hope that no one ever takes that as an insult. But, um, I think Mr. Rudersil can probably attest that this is the way lawyers speak to each other in a professional environment. And it is not, and if ever intended to be an insult. But, um, so I do, I appreciate that as well and I think it's really important. And that said, I, um, have only had the pleasure of knowing, uh, Councilman Kramer in this capacity as a fellow colleague on the dais. It's been an absolute pleasure and an honor to get to know you, um, and your lovely wife as well. And I am excited about this next chapter for you. It will be bittersweet for us, but I'm excited about this next chapter for you. And I, um, happily put my trust in you to take over what Chief Bevan has created and, and developed over the past nine years of her service. So thank you. Real, I have a couple of other little things, but none of them are really like super time sensitive. Hurricane season is next week. That's completely a nightmare. And, but I'm, I'm a hopeful person and I'm gonna hope that we're gonna be, you know, just fine and not have to suffer like we did last year. That said, um, I did just come off of, um, doing, uh, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council Summit. Ms. Singer was able to attend for a portion, I think that that was beneficial. I'd love to see more staff be able to participate in the more technical assets or aspects of that summit. For me, as, um, as an elected official at that event, uh, the takeaway for me, I was the segment on mental health after a disaster. And most notably, I know that we all up, up here have expressed our, you know, the emotional trauma really is what it is for what happened last storm season. But, um, one of the takeaways for me from the summit was that staff also probably suffered as well. You know, they saw some things, they had to deal with some things, they had people crying and, and generally being terrified in, in a real moment of uncertainty. So I'm taking that to heart and I've talked to Ms. Shadique and also Mr. Williams. I don't know if Mr. Perry and I have, uh, had a chance to discuss it, but I would like to do a town hall when I return from vacation, um, in a couple of weeks. Just almost like a, a, you know, for lack of a better word, like a group hug of sorts. A, it's gonna be okay, this is what the city is doing and working on to prepare. Things that they can, you know, citizens can kind of remember, like sign up for Code Red and evacuate if you're in evacuation zone, all of that kind of thing. So that's what's on my mind. All for the good of the order.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kramer.
Thank you, sir. First, I want to congratulate all the graduates of Manatee County Schools and Colleges. Especially the seniors just graduated, uh, Saturday from St. Stevens, which has been my other part-time home, uh, for the last three years, um, along with being here. I got choked up yesterday because they made me feel welcome. And I want to thank all of you for making me feel welcome and, um, be a younger big brother, I think is what I've heard from one. One thing I promised, uh, I was asked by somebody, I'm not gonna say who it was, like, well, this is the time, like, promises would come to, uh, make sure you're appointed or whatever. I said, the only thing I promised, I'll tell you how it is. I know Chief Bevan does too. But, um, you know, sometimes there's stuff about investigations we can't talk about, but you will know where I stand on things, you will know where the department stands and you'll hear it from me. So I promise all of you that. I know you said you hope I'm good. Well, I'm gonna strive to be excellent. I know it's a, uh, strive for perfection is really what Vince Lombardi said, but you know you're not gonna attain it, so you will catch excellence and that's what we're gonna do. I assure you all of that. Thank you all.
Thank you. And, uh, a lot of the comments obviously here today echoed by everybody is, is, is you know where I stand on a lot of things and how I feel. And, um, when I became mayor five years ago, the first meeting, probably the first or second day I had with Chief Bevan, I, I asked her for two things and she can attest to this. One is the way the country was at that time is protect our city. Do what it takes in, in the fair and honest way to protect our city. And, um, the other was to get our department to the point we're at now and I would have her back. And I think it's something that, when I went through the process-
Not ready for that yet.
No, but-
We still got another?
Through the process of, which was tough. We had four great internal candidates at the point and it was tough to pick. But it wasn't tough to pick Josh as number one. The other three were great candidates. The reason that, you know, that the drama that we've been through and the untruths and, and that, and as this job as mayor and, and I was more like a councilman when I was like Mr. Kramer, didn't say much, didn't say a lot. Even some council members accused me of, well, are you ever gonna speak? Well, if it's been said, it didn't need to be said again by me. And so that's how I felt as a councilman. But as mayor and the desire to make our city that next level, that next step. And some of those things that, that I was so proud last week in our workshop. And the workshops aren't televised, but I saw people going through things that are gonna take us to that next step. You know, our police department is accredited, our fire department is working. Our public works, I believe it was eighty-one or eighty-two things that you have to do to become accredited. Because when you do those standards and step up those standards, other things come with it and respect comes with it. And, you know, our planning department going through the things they've been going through. The HR department with the insurance that we're going through. And I, I'm gonna miss some, but going through all of those things is stepping us up into that next level of government. And that's no knock to anybody in the past, it's just where we are now. But we're also expected to do those things when you, um, are up in these seats. And so sometimes you do disagree, sometimes we go with things, sometimes you have to. But you're, we're making those steps and those strides. And I think we have, um, and with Chief Bevan, setting that standard and willing to take those arrows at the time that we needed to, to step up our department. And this council stepped up, and I said it to the, the media, this council stepped up over the last five years with great negotiations, because it's a negotiation in the union. And we were paying forty-five thousand dollars to officers. We're paying, as of October one, I believe it'll be close to sixty-three thousand dollars to the minimum. And everything's articulated up. But that was all done through negotiations. There will be another negotiation next year to work things up. But it's something now that we're gonna be so proud of that Chief Kramer gets sworn in on July eighth and within weeks, we'll be able to swear in several recruits that'll put us at maximum capacity, one hundred and thirty-three. And you didn't hear that before. And that's a testament to her, as well as all of the council members and all of the staff. And, you know, it's, it's a process and we want to keep doing it. But I think it's something that we had to bring the integrity and the leadership to this community and it's happening. So I'm just proud of that. Enjoyed the public works. I drove by the guys on Main Street today on the way here and told them, I said, you know what? I'd rather be in your clothes today digging and putting the plants on Main Street. The little things that matter, you know, that it's not always gonna make a big difference, but those little things when people drive by and see, they see that the city cares. And we're making that friendly city while stepping up. And unfortunately, it does cost more money sometimes, but we've got to step it up. Another thing that we put in, and I asked, um, Nelson and Shamika when I first got in as mayor five years ago, is, is our awards and our quarterly awards and our yearly awards. And I've heard great reviews from that and, because you give kudos to people. You know, sometimes, you know, a title isn't always the most important thing. Sometimes you want money, but, but at a boy or at a girl or a pat on the back is important. And that's what we do. That's life, that's whether it's your kids, your family or your staff. So, you know, I'm, I'm proud of that and, uh, and I'm looking forward to continuing that growth with our workshops and our public works and that, um, and how we do things to make it face it and fix it. And thank you for all of the support on everything on this agenda today because I think that puts us in a higher category league of community that makes it better. It costs a little money sometimes and we all have our opinions on that and I agree with most of them. But, but we go through it and, and we'll get through it even there. And, and then again, graduates, you know, that's, it's so gratifying to see as the graduates get out. And I watched this thing on TV and I told somebody, but, uh, Ms. Coachman, I believe. But there was something on TV this weekend that they showed sixth grade Josh. And he gave where he was in sixth grade. And then as a senior, they showed twelfth grade Josh and basically said where you were, what you are, how you're doing, what you're in six years later. And it was such a testament to say what those kids were doing. And some of them were good students, some of them were athletes, some of them were all over the place. But it was just fun to see that and that's how I look at us. Think about where we were when you started on this council and where we are today. All to our employees and everyone, where you were when you started at your job with the city, where you are today. We hope it can be better and, and that's what every one of us strives in life, so. And it's not political season, it's not election season. So this is more about what we do as a group to make our city better. And, uh, thank you for everything and I think that's all I've got. Mr. Perry.
Just congratulations to, to Chief Kramer.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and, uh, and congratulations to Chief Bevan on her retirement as well. And I appreciate everybody saying those kind words about, uh, our city and our employees because I work with them like you do every day and I just seem to do amazing things. And they, you know, it seems like they, they step up each and every time and every year they get better. And that's all you can hope for people is to, you know, try to give a hundred percent and, and keep getting better at what you do and our folks answer the call. So my hat's off to them and, um, thank you for your leadership, council and mayor.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Chief Gere.
Let me, let me chime in real quick. I've got a, my, uh, B shift station one is being recognized over at Blake Medical uh, for, uh, a traumatic injury survivor. And, uh, they did an excellent job with a vehicle extrication and, and pre-hospital care that contributed to, um, saving this patient. And they're being recognized today at two o'clock.
Congratulations, tell us about the, uh, ladder truck a little bit.
Oh, so the ladder truck is, uh, we've, we've got to go up there and, and, uh, fine tune it a little bit. They're putting the finishing touches on, uh, on it and it'll be on its way, uh, down to Brayden and had to get a little additional work and, and upfitting. And, uh, we'll hope to have that by, um, I'll say, you know, mid-June to bring over to a meeting and, and show to everybody. Really, really nice, uh, apparatus, so nice.
Can you take us up on the platform?
Uh, this one you'll have to climb up to the end if you want to.
This is a climber, yeah.
Hundred and seven feet, so not, not that far.
Any other department heads before we go to Chief Bevan? Chief Bevan.
Just a few things. This is not my last speech, I got a couple more, right? I have next council meeting and then you're swearing in, uh, a couple highlights from what y'all talked about. There's this debate going on right now with my, um, HR section and me that we're only allotted a hundred and thirty-two people. I keep saying a hundred and thirty-three people and since you said it like four times today, it's a hundred and thirty-three, so thank you. No matter what Rob or Lance or whatever has a hundred and thirty-three. Here we go. I find, I find it, um, I find it ironic, maybe you don't remember, but I would actually like to, to take credit for that, um, that quote about excellence and perfection. Because when I got sworn in- Yeah, when I got sworn in, the day I got sworn in, um, and incidentally, I was wearing this shirt the day I got sworn in. This shirt is twelve years old, um, the patches have changed, but I don't know. I, uh, I'm starting to throw them all in a heap and I kept this one to, to swear in my son here in a couple of weeks. And I told you all that if, um, if we pursue perfection, we may never get it, but we're gonna find excellence. And excellence matters in policing because it's what keeps people alive. It's what keeps us doing our job in, in spite of everything else. And so that warms my heart that, um, that's gonna continue to be a mantra of yours. You know, I, uh, I gotta be careful here. I was supposed to be gone these two days to take a class, as you know. And it's a class that I wanted to, um, kinda show the pathway for my folks that helps you kind of unpack that bag, um, for, for mental health and wellness and something that is very important to me. Damn it, you guys! Something that's very important for me to model the way for my officers. I couldn't make it because we had this. And my joke, um, to my wife is like, well, everybody's gonna be emotional and crying up there, so I'll just be able to like join in the thread and same difference, right? Because this, this council, um, this place, this city, this agency is so good with emotional support. We are at the top of our game. You don't really need a class to help you get there. But this was in Coral Gables and it would have been kind of fun for me. But this was more important and, um, you know, uh, I will tell you all while you're still sitting here because I'm not sure that you'll be at the next one. I wasn't happy about getting returned to the dais, as you know. I like being in the, uh, I like being in the audience, but what a great group to be a part of. What a great group to sit up here. Best boss I've ever had. And I've had some good ones. All right, uh, you guys got the annual report in front of you. We have some extra copies should you need them.
Start on page.
It, uh, it doesn't give a lot of, um, data and stats. You know, we have those in different areas, but it gives a great snapshot of who we are as an agency. So by, um, by all means, if you guys need some more, please ask. Hopefully you're gonna involve yourself into the dive into reading program, which begins next week. If you need help signing up, please, and I'm looking at all of you all. Anybody is welcome. Contact Elba if you want a time or a date. They're looking for people out at, um-
Central Caff-
Central Caffay, um, most of all, and there's kids who need some folks next week. And if we don't get more, more volunteers, it's not gonna happen. Yeah, you said arrows, I'm gonna say atom bombs, right? Uh, arrows was probably an understatement. We've been hit with a lot of hard stuff, but that's it. I'm gonna reserve a lot of my comments, but it's, it's, um, sitting up here with you, it's been a, a privilege. I'll miss you at the next meeting, but I'll be there waiting to, uh, embrace you with open arms. Couldn't have made, uh, you couldn't have made a better selection if- If anybody at this agency, in this city, in this town, anybody who I had my eye on to ever take my spot, it was Josh Kramer. And to see you get here is almost next to pinning that badge on my son in a couple of weeks. So.
All right, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.
There was no tear that...